All right, if we can go ahead and be seated, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order at 6:01. Go ahead and start with actions taken in closed session.
Yes, on a seven to zero vote, the Board voted to reject the claim filed by the Law Officers of Joshua A. Burt on behalf of Dr. Gina Lamonica against the district. That's it, thank you.
All right. So next, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Trustee Milchker. I'm sorry, the invocation by Trustee Lang and then the Pledge of Allegiance by Trustee Milchker.
At this festive time of the year, we give thanks for the many blessings that we enjoy and remember those less fortunate than ourselves, that they will experience the spirit of this holiday season. We also want to remember those patriots who serve in all branches of the military service, who protect and serve our country at home and abroad. Please keep them safe from harm and return them to their loving families. Please also watch over all the men and women who serve our country and its citizens, the police, firemen and women, and all others who keep our communities and us safe from a plethora of perils. We particularly ask for wisdom and guidance for those on the front lines of the police who find themselves in challenging circumstances these days, that they will exercise the right degree of judgment in carrying out their responsibilities. We also extend our best wishes and hopes that national, state, and local leaders, including our own Board, will make the best decisions on behalf of our citizenry that will stand the test of time. Thank you.
Please join me in stating the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag for our great nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
All right, may we be seated. Okay, so next, we have the Administration of Oath of Office, and I'm gonna turn over the mic to Trustee Jamal, who will introduce our guest, who will be swearing us in tonight.
Thank you, President Prendergast. I have been asked by Trustee Prendergast, introduced the person who's gonna swear in, our three recently-elected trustees. I know her a little bit. She was just appointed by Governor Brown about four weeks ago to a judgeship in the Orange County Superior Court. And she happens also to be my wife, for those who don't know that. So I'm very proud of her, and she will lead the swearing-in today. So I'll turn it over to Judge Upkarian.
Thank you. Well, we are official. I have my robe on, so if... Could the three please stand up?
You want us to come down there?
It's completely up to you. Raise your right hand. Aye, state your name.
Aye, TJ Prendergast III.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
...that I will support...
That I will support...
...and defend the Constitution of the United States...
And defend the Constitution of the United States.
...and the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California.
...against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith...
That I will bear true faith...
...and allegiance...
Allegiance.
...to the Constitution of the United States...
To the Constitution of the United States.
...and Constitution of the State of California...
And Constitution of the State of California.
...that I take this obligation freely...
I take this obligation freely.
...without any mental reservations...
Without any mental reservations.
...or purpose of evasion...
Or purpose of evasion.
...and that I will well and faithfully discharge...
And I will well and faithfully discharge...
...the duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Next, we have our annual organizational meeting, the election of officers of the Board. So at this time, we will entertain a motion...
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion.
Oh, go right ahead.
I'd like to nominate TJ Prendergast to the Office of President of the Board of Trustees.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any other discussion on the item? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and take a vote. Do I have to abstain?
No.
No.
You can abstain.
It's covered by your napkin.
Oh, okay. There we are.
We have seven yes votes and one student advisory yes vote. Thank you very much. This time, we'll entertain a motion for Vice President.
Madam... Mr. President, I'm sorry. I'd like to nominate Tim Jamal for Vice President of the Board of Trustees.
And a motion and a second for Trustee Jamal to be Vice President of the Board. Anyone wish to speak to that item?
Thank you for the nomination.
Go ahead and vote. Oh, what happened?
It went dark.
While they fix that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. It's unanimous with one student advisory yes vote, I think.
One trustee abstention.
Who abstained?
Jamal.
Oh, I don't think you had to.
I said aye.
Okay. Now, we will take a motion for clerk of the Board.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to nominate Jim Wright for the Office of Clerk of the Board.
Okay, we have a nomination for Jim Wright. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second, okay. Yes, Bill.
I would like to nominate Marcia Milchker as the Clerk of the Board.
Okay. Do I have a second for that motion?
Second.
Okay. Procedurally, my understanding of Robert Schulz's order is you have to take the first motion, and if that motion is then voted down, then we can do the second motion. So we have to do the vote on Trustee Wright first. Anybody parliamentarian out there challenge me on that?
Are these really motions or are they nominations?
They're nominations by motion. It is. But, all right.
Can we speak?
Yeah, so let's go with the maker of the motion to nominate Trustee Wright. It would be Trustee Lang, so if you'd like to speak to your motion.
Just that I think Trustee Wright would make a fine clerk of the Board.
Okay. Seconder of the motion was Trustee Padberg. Would you like to speak to the motion for Trustee Wright?
I also would like to support Trustee Wright. I think that he has ample experience to do a very good job as clerk of the Board.
Okay, so technically, you're speaking to the motion for Trustee Wright.
Well, I think Trustee Wright is an excellent candidate for the Clerk of the Board. I think Trustee Milchker is also an excellent candidate for Clerk of the Board, and I... Perhaps there could be a way to only vote for one, where we're not having to vote on both concurrently. Or perhaps one of them may withdraw.
Voluntarily withdraw their nomination? That is a possibility.
Because I think both are very well-qualified, and Trustee Wright is extremely qualified and ready, and I think Trustee Milchker is also well-qualified.
If there's any proof these are not preorganized, this is it. Yes, Trustee J.
Yes, I'd like to speak up for Marcia Milchker. She has tremendous experience as the Clerk of the Board, as well as being the President of the Board and the Vice President of the Board during various years. So I am going to vote for Marcia Milchker.
Okay. So...
Do they get to speak?
I mean, I guess you could each speak as to how much you want the job.
It's okay.
All right. So again, my understanding is that we then need to first vote for the election for Trustee Wright, for clerk of the Board. Yes.
I'm gonna let Trustee Wright have it, if he really wants it.
Okay, so we have a withdrawal of nomination from Trustee Milchker, which should help the vote for Trustee Wright. Have we fixed the system yet? Does not... Oh, wait. Oh, look, there it goes. All right, so we'll go ahead and vote on the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. Now we're doing it by button. You need to hit your button. It's a unanimous yes vote with one student advisory yes vote. Thank you. Okay.
Can I just say something else?
Yes.
I thought that was a very gracious move on Trustee Milchker's part.
Yes, thank you very much for that. All right, so then now, we have the appointment of a Secretary and Assistant Secretary. Traditionally, the Secretary is the Chancellor. So we will...
I saw move.
Yes, thank you. We have a motion and a second to nominate the Secretary of the Board to be Gary Portner, Chancellor. We'll go ahead and vote on the item. Unanimous yes vote with one student advisory yes vote. Assistant Secretary is traditionally Vice Chancellor of Business Services, but does not necessarily have to be.
Second.
So the nomination is motion and seconded for Vice President of Business Services, Deborah Fitzsimmons. Go ahead and vote on the item. We have a unanimous yes vote with one student advisory yes vote. Next, we have appointment of trustee representatives. We have need for a representative to nominating committee to the Committee on School District Organization. The current representative is myself. The alternate representative is Trustee Jamal. Do I have a nomination for the representative to nominating committee to the Committee on School District Organization?
Do we ask the same individual to serve the same...
TJ, hand.
Yes, Trustee J.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to stay with the same individuals for that committee. Go ahead and vote on that. Unanimous yes vote, one student advisory yes vote. Next, we have the district's political action rep to Orange County School Board Association. That current representative is Jim Wright. We do not have an alternate, but I do not believe we need one.
I saw move.
Second.
All right. Staying with Trustee Wright in that position, if he still wants it. Okay. I'll go ahead and vote. Trustee Jamal. Unanimous yes vote and one student advisory yes vote. Next, we have the representative to the Orange County Legislative Task Force. Current representative is Trustee Milchker. Our alternate is Trustee Lang.
I move the same trustees.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a second. Do I have any objection from the nominees? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Unanimous yes vote, one student advisory yes vote. Next, we have representatives to South Orange County Community College District Audit Committee. The Chair of that committee is Trustee Lang. Representative number one is Trustee Jamal, and Representative number two is Trustee Padberg. Do I...
I saw move.
I have a motion to stay with the same three individuals in the same capacity? And I have a second. Do any of those individuals wish to not do that?
Can I just speak?
Yes.
So I assume that Trustee Lang will remain Chairman, correct?
That was the way I worded the motion for him, yes.
No, I support that.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and vote on that. Unanimous yes vote, one student advisory yes vote. Next, we have establishment of regular meeting dates and times. You all received that in advance, and were given an opportunity for input. We have a motion to approve the dates as indicated and a second. Yes. And no one has any last-minute changes to that calendar. We will go ahead and vote on that item. Unanimous yes vote, one student advisory yes vote. Next, we have the planning calendar. A motion and a second to approve the Agenda Planning Calendar, which typically is the calendar for when the agendas need to be released to the public, based on the regular calendar. Go ahead and vote on that item. Unanimous yes vote and one student advisory yes vote. The Agenda format, we need to approve that. Okay. I would like to make a comment. One of the things we have in the Agenda that we have woefully not been able to fulfill, and it was my suggestion initially to have that on the Agenda format, was that we would return from closed session by the regular meeting time that was on the schedule, and then return to closed session if necessary. It turns out, the practicality of that is it doesn't work because we have an attorney present in closed session, and then if we do that, then we're... He's on the clock, and that costs the district extra funds. So I would like to withdraw my original request to do that, as much as it pains me, if anybody doesn't object to that. Yes. Correct. So we would change the wording to remove the parentheses or parenthetical adjournment. Does everyone understand where we are on that? Okay.
Mr. President, may I say something?
Certainly.
I just wish to point out that although it may cost the district money for the lawyer, that the inconvenience and time spent for those who wish to address the Board should also be taken into consideration, that it is a direct out-of-pocket expense for the lawyer, but it's a kind of a community expense of time and other lost advantages.
Which I really appreciate, because it's why I introduced it in the first place. I think what my intent is, is that hopefully that there will be a greater effort on the part of staff to potentially put a better time as to when we will reconvene. But again, I'm not happy about that situation, which is why I introduced it in the first place. Trustee Lang.
I think the answer is that we stick to our agenda. It's adhered to that it's in closely spotable. I think the administration has done a pretty good job of letting us know if we're going to have a closed session that's gonna be lengthier, in which case we'll start that session earlier, in some cases, so that we're not holding up members of the public. I think all of us feel that we certainly do have an obligation to the public to conduct our meetings in a very timely fashion and stick to the time limits that we've laid out so that it isn't an inconvenience to those that would come and want to address the Board. It's certainly, those times that we've done that, it's not been out of disrespect for anybody, but rather because there has been some urgent pressing business that... In which the time limits were unforeseen.
Thank you.
All right, so the motion on the floor, as it stands, is to remove that item. Was it seconded?
Second.
It was, okay. All right, so with that, seeing no more requests to speak...
Request to speak, sir?
Oh, sorry. I looked up here.
Kathy Schmider, President of IBC Academic Senate. May I ask, this is just, since we're talking about formatting, that a header or a footer be placed throughout the Agenda? Because some of the Agenda items are peculiarly long. It's hard, when you're looking through either online or here, to figure out exactly where you are in the Agenda, but if there were headers or footers on each page, we'd know?
Header or footer indicating what?
Just that says, you know, Agenda Item 3.2, and then on... And then the next one would say Agenda Item 3.3, and so you'd know where you... When you just dip into the middle, someplace you know.
Are you talking about headers and footers on the... Or the, like, the appendices?
Yeah, all through the whole exhibits, yeah.
And the exhibits?
Right. There is a head... There are headers and footers on the main Agenda, but on all the exhibits... Just for the exhibit pieces.
So, like, for example, 5.1, you go to Exhibit A. It just says Exhibit A, 1 of 9, but it doesn't say it's for 5.1?
Well, it only says that on the first page, and then when you go to Page 3, it doesn't say anything.
Well, it... So, Mr. President?
Can I ask a question? Kathy, are you talking about the electronic version or the paper version?
They're the same.
Are they identical, even in terms of the...
Yeah, if you look at 5.1, and you look at Exhibit A...
Right, I'm on it.
The only thing it says is Exhibit A, 1 of 9. It doesn't anywhere indicate what it is an Exhibit 4. And I believe that makes a lot of sense, if we can. Is that a logistical problem? I don't know if that... Is that technically qualifies as Agenda format in this part of the process? I assume it would. But it... And now that I see what she's pointing out, it makes sense. Because, yeah, you do get lost. All right, well, let's finish the vote on the first item, and then we can make a motion on it. The item we're voting on is to remove the portion in the Agenda where it says we will reconvene from closed session at the time that is indicated, and then return if necessary. We're voting to remove that clause.
Return, okay.
And to do the parentheses edit that Trustee Lang indicated. Okay? With that, we'll go ahead and vote on that item. Okay. We have six yes votes, one no vote, and one student advisory yes vote. Now, we can entertain a motion to ask that the format have the Agenda Item numbers listed on each header of the exhibits for that Agenda item. Yes.
Would I be allowed to speak a moment?
Yes.
A lot of the Board items do come from our office. So as we assemble the items, we put them into the iDrive, where the Board Office does get them. We do identify them, but then the Board number, item number, is assigned and reordered as items come in. It would be hard for us to know in advance what that number is to put it on the exhibits. So it'd be a lot of work at the very end for the Board Office to actually put those on those at the very end. I think it might be very difficult, logistically, just saying the timeline that we have.
Okay.
So, I mean, we'd have to look into it, but I just know from speaking for Grace, it could be very difficult.
Well, I haven't gotten a motion to do it, so so far, it's just been a request. So I have... Trustee Lang has a request to speak.
Yes, my comment would be is, is I think we could take Kathy Schmider's recommendation under advisement and see what we could do to make the Agenda easier to follow on the part of, you know, everybody that, you know, that's trying to look at this, without making this a formal motion. That would be my recommendation.
Okay. We can do that.
And I second that. And I think they should probably get together for the next month and try to figure something out that can work.
So it wouldn't be a formal approval in the Agenda process that we're doing? It's just... Yeah, okay. So with that, we'll go ahead and approve the Agenda format as amended. Go ahead and vote on that. We were voting on my amendment, basically, or the offered amendment. We have a unanimous yes vote and one student advisory yes vote. At this point, we need to adjourn the organizational meeting that we just had and call to order the special meeting of the Facilities Corporation of the South Orange County Community College District. This is where we elect a Board of Directors and officers for the Facilities Corporation of 2011 South Orange County Community College District. The typical format is the President is the Board of Directors, and then the... Or, I'm sorry, the... All Board members are Board of Directors. The President is the President of the Board, Facilities Corporation. The Vice President is the Vice President of Facilities Corporation, and so on down the line.
I love that.
And then we have an Assistant Secretary, who's typically the Chancellor, and the Assistant Treasurer is typically the...
Second.
Vice Chancellor of Business Services.
One area is the Chief Financial Officer.
That also tends to be the Vice Chancellor of Business Services.
Okay.
So move.
And, okay, I have a motion, I have a second. I do. We'll go ahead and vote on the item. We have a unanimous yes vote and one student advisory yes vote. That now adjourns the Facilities Corporation meeting. And we will now take a 10-minute break for reorganization of the seating on the dais. It may not take 10 minutes, but they have to reorganize the voting scheme and all of that. So we'll take a small break. 2.6, which is recognitions, and I do not see any. So then we'll go ahead to 2.7, public comments. I have three of them at this point. And I would just like to remind speakers that you have two minutes. Our clock apparently is not working, so I'll be getting a visual indicator from the staff. First, I have Andrew Zida. Please approach podium. Thank you.
Mr. President and members of the Board and everybody. My name is Ed Zida. It is pronounced D-Zida.
Sorry about that.
Quite all right. I'm here because I've been invited by the Faculty Association to share some of my experience as a part-time, temporary instructor in this district, as well as in others. I've been working as a temporary part-time, to use the technical term, instructor in this district, as well as in others, for the last 20 years. I am still at it, and I hope to continue to be at it till I drop dead, partly because my compensation as a temporary part-time teacher has made it very difficult, if not impossible, to accumulate enough resources to support myself during any kind of a retirement. I teach philosophy and religious studies part-time. Prior to my coming to... Beginning to teach temporary part-time in these various districts, I had been a Roman Catholic priest for 16 years. I left the priesthood, and I left the Roman Catholic Church 20 years ago or so. I'm now 67 years old. I was trying to think of something that I might share that you haven't heard a million times before about the plight, you know, of the temporary part-time teachers, and I couldn't really... Wasn't really... Couldn't think of much, but one thing that did occur to me recently was this, maybe you haven't heard this. It occurred to me... It would occur to me to share with you something that I just realized myself, just recently, and that is about my own spiritual state, I guess you could say, that I find myself pretty much all the time when I come... when I come to work in our district here and other districts. I find myself pretty much all the time just a little furious. Not extremely furious, not extremestly furious, but still furious. And still pretty regularly a little, as I say, a little furious. I don't like this for various reasons, partly because I, I just don't, it's not a good thing to be furious all the time, even if it's a little furious. And it's a kind of fury that, special, kind of special kind of fury, I don't know if it's really special, special kind of fury that comes, I'm thinking, thinking about this, that, that comes from at least perceiving that you're being treated unfairly, but you don't have any realistic way to get out of it, get out of the situation.
I'm sorry, I haven't indicated the time. Just come on, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Kathy Schmider. But I understand you have an alternate speaker of Bill Eder. Okay.
Hello, thank you. My name is Bill Eder. I'm a co-chair of the English Department at Irvine Valley College. Because so many of the courses in our department are required writing courses, we offer a very large number of sections each semester. This essential work could not be conducted without our adjunct instructors. Currently adjunct faculty teach seventy-one percent of the composition sections we offer. So how fortunate we are, then, that we have excellent adjunct instructors who are committed to quality instruction. In my capacity as department chair, I've learned how these adjunct instructors teach multiple courses at multiple institutions, often at some distance from one another, while still managing to find time for their families. And despite all of these demands, I regularly witness our adjunct faculty taking time and effort, exceeding their job requirements to promote student success. For example, I regularly see our adjunct instructors meeting with students after classes to answer questions, discuss drafts of papers, and discuss students' progress in the class, even though adjunct instructors are not required to hold office hours. Over the last few months, some of our adjunct instructors volunteered their own time to review drafts of students' personal statements for University of California applications. In the past, our adjunct instructors have volunteered to judge student work for our English Club writing contests, so students could ultimately be recognized for excellence in writing. And furthermore, at the start of each semester, many of our adjuncts devote several hours to attending a norming workshop the department conducts to ensure consistency of evaluation of student work. I could list many more examples, and in each case, these instructors are making student success their top priority, even when that commitment means exceeding their job descriptions while sacrificing some of the little free time that they have. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next, I have Kurt Meyer.
Good evening, board. It's a, a pleasure to have the opportunity to speak with you tonight, as it has been in the past. I am, it's also my pleasure to serve as the Faculty Association rep to the School of Humanities and Languages at Irvine Valley College. And part of my role is to communicate with and for the full-time and part-time colleagues of mine in the School of Humanities and Languages, particularly with respect to questions and concerns. And I sent out an email reminding them of that. And in anticipation of this opportunity, I received several correspondences from part-time faculty. And what, it's too much to try to cover in two minutes. So what I thought I would try to do is touch on some of the, the recurring themes in a song, in a Christmas carol. I want to thank, I want to wish you all a happy holiday and a great new year now, because when I sing, I'm usually not invited back. So here's testament to that truth. On the twelfth day of Christmas, our part-time faculty gave to thee twelve papers of grading, eleven late-night emails and answering, ten students of conferencing in the quad, because the one adjunct office isn't sufficient to space for scores of part-time instructors, nine bucks of gas a pumping, so I can drive to the school and teach in a district which I cannot afford to live and hopefully make it home this time, eight different classes of teaching in three different college districts so I can make rent, seven freeways of driving, six dozen student learning outcomes of reporting, five hours of sleep, four hours of pay for each class I teach each week, three times as many hours invested in each class I teach per week, two aspirins and a phone call in the morning, and a hope for a fair contract, and a full-time job. Thank you.
I guess the good news is, is we don't have to invite you, you're welcome to come anytime. Or bad news, depending on your perspective. Okay. So next, we have oral reports from the board. We'll start down here with Trustee Jay.
Yes. Where's the, here we go. Yeah, I, I just want to wish everybody a, a great new year and a merry Christmas and happy Hanukkah and all the other good things that we say at this time of year. It's been a very good year, I think, for the colleges. And I want to hope that next year is the same. So hang in there. We hope that things improve and are even better during the coming year. Thank you.
Trustee Milchker.
Thanks, Trustee Jay. Good, good, good comments. I thought I'd mention a few, a few of the things I attended since the last board meeting. One of the things I, I attended that I thought was incredible was the Southern California Conference for Undergraduate Research. And this was held at Cal State Fullerton. I attended one of the professors of engineering at Irvine Valley College, Ilkner Erbus White. And I saw a number of our professors that are here now at, at the all-day conference at, at Cal State Fullerton, including Claire Cesario Silva, Gary Luke, Alana Rosenberg, Brenda Boran, Kurt Meyer, who just spoke, Louis Long, Priscilla Ross, Sangjai Gupta, Roy McCord, Judy Titus, June McLaughlin, and Martha Stufler, among others. And these professors actually took, took their own time to, to encourage their students to participate in poster sessions in this very, very serious conference at Cal State Fullerton, where they were actually showing their research projects in poster sessions. And I, as you probably know, I'm a research biologist and was a part-time professor of biology at Santa Ana College for a number of years. So I, I thought that the students were, really did a fabulous job, and the professors that were mentoring them took their own time, bought their own tickets, spent the day there with the students, and it was really wonderful to see our, our students with such incredible opportunities as to be able to participate in posters, poster sessions. Subsequently, the next week, I went to a poster session in Seattle from another research conference, and it was excellent also, but it, it wasn't any better than the research conference with so many of our students from Saddleback and Irvine Valley College at all. That was really superb. And I thank all our professors and all of our students that participated in it. Some of the other things I did, oh, Irvine Valley College and Saddleback College had more students than anyone than, than the, than the host college, which is Cal State Fullerton, and, and many of the post-secondary education institutions from around here were, had their students exhibiting at this conference. I also attended the Orange County Community College Legislative Task Force meeting, which I was a founder of that organization with Chancellor Portner and Terry Flugerman, and the nurse pinning ceremony, the, the holiday party at Saddleback College, and the Economic Development Conference, that I was able to make some, some really good contacts in people doing, attracting students from, from, foreign students from other countries. So more, more about that later. And I want to say, happy holidays to all, have a wonderful, wonderful holiday season, and I'm looking forward to seeing you all during the professional development week, I think it's the thirteenth of January. So I'll be looking forward to seeing you then. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Wright.
Thank you very much, President TJ. I attended a number of events this last month. I just, let me list just a couple of them that I attended. I started off on December the third by a TV interview on Channel Six in Laguna Woods, bragging about both of our colleges and what we were doing here. It was a wonderful event. Then I attended the Feast of Lights at McKinney Theater, in which, this is an annual tradition at Saddleback College, been going on for years. They were trying to decide how many years it's been going on, but this features the Saddleback College Symphony and the Saddleback College Choirs. And we celebrate the, they celebrated the, the holiday season by singing some new and old holiday favorites. I also attended the Saddleback College Nurses Pinning Ceremony, wonderful event. The nursing program honored fifty-two graduates in a symbolic candle lightings and pinning ceremony, wonderful event. I also attended the open, the parties at Saddleback College and also IVCs. And another holiday party at our chancellor's. I just wanted to comment and just brag a little bit about some of the things that our colleges are doing. First of all, I wanted to recognize Dr. Ben Rockmore, who attended on Thursday, December the fourth, a very exciting summit in Washington DC hosted by President Obama, the First Lady and President, Vice President Biden. The topic was how to extend college opportunities and to increase college completion for more first-generation, low-income, and under-representative students. And then finally, congratulate Saddleback College. They just won a, they were one of ten recipients for a one-point-two-million-dollar Innovation Maker Grant awards for STEM teachers. STEM is science, technology, engineering, and math, so congratulations to both of those colleges. Happy holidays and have a great new year.
Thank you. Trustee Jamal.
Yes, thank you, President Prendergast. I want to thank my colleagues for supporting me to the position of Vice President. Looking forward to it over the next, whatever period of time it lasts. And congratulations to President Prendergast on your second year as president, and to Trustee Wright to assuming the role of clerk, and to Trustee Milchker again for your gracious move during that process. So I attended the CCLC convention in Rancho Mirage a few weeks ago. I know we had some people there from Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College actually making presentations. I saw part of, part of one, I think, the IVC presentation. I thought you folks represented the college well. I also attended the OCBC Economic Development Conference that Trustee Milchker mentioned, and recently attended last week, the, two weeks ago, the meeting of the IVC Foundation Board of Directors. The IVC Foundation is at a real critical moment as they have lost their executive director, and so a new leadership person is going to be put in place. And that's real important for the foundation and for the programs at IVC, so I know that Dr. Rockmore is leading that process. Also attended the Nurses Pinning Ceremony and the open, holiday open house at Saddleback College, though I was really disappointed the, you know, the, the whole spirit of Santa Claus was, was not, didn't come true, as, not everyone received a gift from Santa this year. So maybe we can fix that next year, Santa. And I'm, I'm sorry I missed the IVC open house. And I wish everyone, we have a wonderful district. I think we all know that. There are challenges and time to reflect a little bit more and, and enjoy your family's treasury of the time. Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and Happy New Year, and everything else to everybody. Thank you.
All right. So I did attend a number of the same events that previous trustees mentioned, the holidays, parties, and the open house, and the nurses pinning. I would like to reiterate Trustee Jamal's concern about the spirit of giving for trustees at these events. I was oh-for-two. I did not get anything at IVCs either. I mentioned to the chancellor, we should move their review until after the holiday parties next year, or next time. But we'll see. No, it's totally fine. I did attend, I was asked and invited by the Chair of the ACC OC Energy and Environment Committee to sit in on that committee and be a member. I attended the first meeting earlier in this month, and it was a very interesting coalition of business leaders as well as city staff and city councilmen and women from around Orange County, whose overall goal is to try and create a system in which people aren't reinventing the wheel on learning regulations and what comes to environment and energy and so forth. There was representatives from Chevron and SCE and Southern California Gas, as well as, again, these city leaders. So I, I felt a little out of place when I was there, because I'm not a city councilperson, but it, but they did recognize how much of a role our district plays in all of the, the city decisions that go on in, in the cities that we are a part of. So I'm looking forward to serving on that committee, and I will giving, be giving reports as to their activities. But it was, it was really, really an honor to be a part of that. The other event I attended that some other trustees were there was this California Teachers Association trustee dinner. We thank you very much for that invitation, and it was a very nice evening. I just returned from San Francisco from the California School Board Association meeting, where my district that I teach in, we presented a seminar on interest-based approach in negotiations that we use there, and we were expecting maybe thirty, forty school board members and superintendents, and we had a hundred and sixty. We had to turn people away. It was shocking how much interest there is out there in interest-based approach. So it was a very successful conference session, and I, I was, I feel really good about it. I too want to mention the successes the two colleges have had. I'm not going to steal your reports like we've done in the past. I'm just going to say congratulations on everything you've achieved this month and say happy holidays. Thank you. Trustee Padbert.
Hello, thank you. I would like to say to everyone, happy holidays. This is the time of year where you'll be with your family and celebrate the Christmas season as is your habit. In addition, I normally would talk about the events I've been to, but I haven't been to a lot because I've been recovering from the sickness I had. So I will continue to go back to those events when I get time on my calendar. And we'll hopefully see some of you people there. I enjoy them, and it gives me a chance to really revel in our two colleges and what they're doing. So I'll see you there, and, and again, happy Christmas and Hanukkah and what have you, okay?
Thank you. Trustee Lang.
Yes, December is always a, a difficult month for me and I suspect for others in balancing all of the, the work, civic, and social responsibilities that mark this time of the season. I should say in advance that I'll do you all a favor not sing my remarks. I do want to be invited back. Nevertheless, I did manage like all, most of the rest of my colleagues to attend the Nurses Pinning Ceremony, which is always a moving experience that I, I really thoroughly enjoy. And I want to thank all of those that are involved in that program that consistently does such a stellar job. I mean, the Nurses Program is really, probably I consider the best in the state, but I may be a little bit prejudiced there, I don't know. I wanted also to give a shout out to Coach Tom Pestalaci and all of the superb athletes on IVC's women's volleyball team for completing a perfect, I think it was twenty-eight-and-o record season in capturing the state title in volleyball. Absolutely incredible. What an achievement. I also particularly wanted to acknowledge both Tom and Diane Pestalaci individually. They are truly outstanding individuals, each in their own rights, serve our schools, Irvine Valley College and Saddleback Community College with all of their tremendous efforts. At the same time, I also wanted to extend my condolences to them on the loss of Tom's father, Bob, who's a bit here appeared in the newspaper this weekend, but not to end up on a sad note. I did want to wish everybody a very happy holiday season and a great new year. Thank you.
So, trustee Korea, let's try that again.
Thank you, Mr. President. So as the year's ending, you know, we all have things to be thankful for. Well, I just want to be thankful for everybody in this room. I hope you guys all have great health this year, next year, and the years to come. I didn't really attend many events because I have finals, six finals I had to study for, so quite a bit. I did attend the Win Ensemble Orchestra Concert at Saddleback College held at McKinney Theater and it was a very good concert. I had lots of fun. It was really nice. I brought my girlfriend and we, you know, we enjoyed our time. So please, thank you for that and continue on. It's really nice. Thank you. And also, I'd like to thank both colleges for the success. Quite a bit of stuff that happened this year. I'd like to thank you on behalf of the students. Keep representing us and just do the best that you can because, I mean, it's all for the students, right? So, thank you. Happy holidays. And congratulations TJ Prendergast, Jamal Wright. Congratulations.
Thank you. All right. Next we have chancellor's report.
Okay, first item is to present Board President TJ Prendergast, plaque in recognition of his past year's service as president on the board. He can add this now to his long collection of plaques and place it on here. Thank you. Okay. Tonight, we're going to begin a series of discussion items that relate back to the listening sessions that the board had last April and where the board met confidentially with employees, where they were given an opportunity to talk about topics of interest to them. And so the board is going to, at each meeting now, have this presentation about those topics and become more informed about them. Tonight was one that showed up in both of the listening sessions. It's the 50% law and the faculty obligation number. In upcoming months, we'll have, in the following month, the DRAC funding model, the development of the academic calendar, policy for hiring administrators and managers, the policy for hiring faculty, and the filling of classified employee openings. We're in the final week of the fall term and I want to thank faculty and staff for, again, giving their all for a very positive educational experience for our students. Thank you very much. I also want to add my best wishes for a happy holiday season to all of you and to the whole college community.
Thank you. Thank you for the plaque. And I would have to say, I couldn't have done it out without the team, guys. A lot of support from trustee Milchker and trustee Padberg through the process. Thank you. So next we have the college presidents' reports. Start with President Rockmore, I guess. Trade back and forth.
Well, thank you very much and congratulations to the trustees who took on new positions here tonight. Well, it's with great sadness that we share with you the loss of our colleague and friend, Marie De La Palme, who passed away last evening. Marie joined the full-time faculty at Irvine Valley College in 2008, where she started the Performing Dance Ensemble. Among other achievements, the ensemble performed for KCET Live Holiday Celebration in 2009 and has twice been a finalist at the amateur division of the McCallum Choreography Festival in Palm Desert and performed in France in the summer of 2012. Marie's works are based on metaphors of life of the soul and have been hailed by critics. Her works included Le Cour Illuminé, grand prize in 2002, Immortal Beloved, Virginia Waring Award for Best Duet, The Door in 2005, The Cage, which received an Engagement Award in 2006, and The Beret Engagement Award in 2009, all of which were presented at IVC. Our hearts are with Marie's husband Joe and her family at this time of profound sorrow, but I am told that she was at peace. Marie's funeral mass will be held on tomorrow, actually, at 10:00 AM in Newport Beach. If you don't have the information and desire to have it, please contact Diane Oakes at IVC for that information. I have another thing to tell you. That is, IVC lost a student in a single car crash also on Sunday. It's so recent that I'm not sure I'm even going to pronounce the name correctly, but Kwame Kawabi is what I believe it is. And so let us just say that our hearts go out to family and friends of Kwame. And so with that, I wish everyone a safe and restful holiday.
Thank you. President Burnett.
Thank you. First off, for the record, two of the four trustees actually won a gift at the annual holiday open house. That's a 50% success rate. Come on. Well, first, I want to, of course, join everybody else in congratulating TJ President TJ Prendergast, Vice President Tim Jamal, and Clerk Jim Wright. Also, I wanted to thank Marsha Milchker and trustee Nancy Padberg for their wonderful leader service and leadership all these years, if not decades. This has been a very, as many people know, a very successful semester at Saddleback College. As you've known, we've been talking about it all this year and last year. In our four top priority areas, of course, we've been making a lot of progress on. You'll hear a lot more at the coming Professional Development Week, and that's on enrollment management. You'll hear a little bit today about that, but there's a lot more. Student success, of course, K-12 partnerships, and economic and workforce development. With that, we look forward to seeing everybody at Professional Development Week. We're already talking about that. That's on, it does start January 13th through the 16th, and encourage you in particular to be at the Faculty Breakfast on Thursday, January 15th, the Part-Time Faculty Dinner on January 15th as well that night, and then our Classified Staff Luncheon on the January 16th. With that, I'm also very, we were saddened also at Saddleback and our district lose a very valued member of our family. We were saddened that Kay Lynette Stevens, who's our professor and department chair of the Medical Assistant Program and Insurance and Coding, unexpectedly passed away last week. Kay joined the Saddleback faculty in 1978 as adjunct and became full-time in 1990. She became an emeritus instructor 15 years later and remained as an adjunct and department chair of medical assisting until her passing. Our thoughts and condolences go out to Kay's family, friends, colleagues, and students. The memorial service will actually be held this Friday at 1:00 at the Laguna Country United Methodist Church at 1:00 PM. She will be greatly, greatly missed. With that, happy holidays, happy Hanukkah, merry Christmas, happy Kwanzaa, and happy new year, and we'll see you all in 2015.
Thank you. Do not see anyone from ASG. They're probably studying or they're done and celebrating. And we also do not have any board requests for reports, so we'll move to the first discussion item, 4.1, Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College Enrollment Management Plan Presentation. Continuation of our presentation.
Good evening. Just to remind you, we were asked to make a report. Thank you very much. I should introduce you, but I think everybody knows Dr. Craig Justice, Dr. Linda Fontanella, and Dr. Juan Avalos. And I'm Kathy Worley. Our request was to talk about the different components of an enrollment management plan and what our short and long-term plans were to be able to hit our targets in terms of FTES. The definition we provided is just a common one. There are so many out there, but this one seemed to characterize the elements that we were looking at in that it's systematic, comprehensive, and research-driven. It's actually a blueprint for achieving our FTS targets, attracting the type and the numbers of students that we're looking to serve. And some of the components that we'll be talking about tonight are data-driven, student-centered scheduling, student success and retention, outreach and recruitment, which is kind of an overarching thing. It's not specific to a piece of the plan, but it encompasses all the different areas that we're working on. Managing the funnel, which is everything from the time the first contact with the college occurs, be it through a website or an event, through students actually following through and registering. And there are multiple steps that take place each time, the number of students with each new step getting smaller. K-12 partnerships is very important to us as that's one of the primary targets we're looking to serve. And online education is a way of attracting students who otherwise might not be able to attend the college.
Thank you, Dr. Worley. And we believe in the offices of instruction that the development of the schedule should be student-centered. And we work very closely with our department chairs, the deans, student reps, and others, certainly the research people, to look at historical data trends. We want to know what gaps exist. For example, the number of sections scheduled in English writing versus how many are needed. We also want to use our rooms effectively. We want students to be able to pass from module to module very easily and get the greatest number of classes that they possibly can to complete their education plan. We look at balance in the days of the week, the mix of online, hybrid, and face-to-face classes. It's a very rich and rewarding analysis, but the data that informs us of this process tells us that there are very unique needs of each student population, and we need to know who it is we are serving. There's community data, regional data, that all have an impact on the enrollment. And there's also individual student data that informs us about what the students are preferring. And that, of course, changes through time with more interest in online and hybrid courses. We identify what we call market segments. These are subgroups of the total student population. There's not one size that fits all. We have a large number of recent high school graduates who come to us, are continuing students. There's a mix of transfer, CTE, and basic skills students, as well as those just coming back for one or two courses in skills enhancement. We have our lifelong learners, primarily in the emeritus institutes, and then our returning students. And a growing share of our student population are non-residents, particularly international students. And more recently, we've taken on planning role and soon implementation role for adult education. This lovely array of data in the chart shows you the trend lines over time from 1992 to this past fall semester. And generally, the trend has been upward with a few ups and downs. And when you dissect that in any one given year, Irvine Valley's numbers look, as you see here in the pie charts, about nearly one-fifth of our students' measurement in terms of full-time equivalent students are CTE, Career Technical Education. One in five of our students are career technical. A very large number of transfer. We have a large headcount in emeritus, but the number of hours that they take are smaller. And we also have a very large basic skills population. In terms of the resident and non-resident full-time equivalent students, as you see, over 10% of our FTES workload generated is from non-resident students, and many of those are international. Many of them want to go, of course, to UC Irvine. That's very close by. And now the Saddleback pie charts.
What you see in the comparison is some of the uniqueness of each of our two colleges, where we focused on different pieces of the overall enrollment to achieve the balance that we have for each college. We have a much smaller...
I'm sorry to interrupt. Somebody's, the phone needs to either be on airplane mode or off because it's interfering with the recording system. I have no idea who it could be, but trying to get that fixed. Please continue.
All right. So you can see that the mix is a little bit different here in terms of the percentage overall and a smaller non-resident group that we serve. What's happened in the last year or so is what we've named the perfect storm because there have been a lot of factors that have influenced our enrollments and our ability to hit our targets. You remember the chart where we had the time changes where primarily you saw an upward trend, but there were places where the enrollment succumbed to pressures and did decline for a little bit, and then we were able to pick back up. What we've experienced are regulatory changes that affected when students could register and what courses they were eligible to take this year. There was an economic uptick, which meant that many students who would typically have been in school were now working and not necessarily needing to upgrade their skills. We saw a variety of things that resulted in technology changes that had to be made. For example, the new CCC Apply was rolled out. The registration priorities meant that suddenly all of the programming for our enrollment appointments had, or registration appointments, had to be redone. And it was not a simple kind of fix. New freshmen coming in who are fully matriculated get priority registration for two, not one semester. So it makes it very different. And then it's also different whether they come in fall term or spring term in terms of what two semesters and how that's carried over. It's not a uniform process. And then we had some things that we hadn't been using in our IMS that got turned on, such as the prerequisite token validations, the families that courses were assigned to in terms of repeatability. All of these things hit at once. In addition, there were facilities issues, perceived facilities issues, even when we added parking spots, students didn't see them as, you know, parking close to where their class was. They still assumed that there was a tremendous shortage. And then we saw population changes. Juan's going to talk about the environmental scan that was published in 2013. We are experiencing declines in our college aging populations even in advance of what was predicted in that scan.
And as mentioned in enrollment management, you're looking at current trends, you're looking at historical data, you're looking at needs, you're looking at potential impacts in a way to try to predict what might happen and make very intentional changes as you go. As referenced, we did our external scan 2013, and one of the major insights that came through for Saddleback was to take, see that there will be a change, a slight decline in the traditional age population for us. So by 2020, if we keep doing what we've been doing, our numbers will go down. If we go out and reach out to higher yields of this population and look for additional populations, then we'll be able to be at par with the changes. This is one example of taking a look at some of that data, making adjustments to make sure that we don't let enrollments happen to us, but that we actually manage that growth.
And looking at that same environmental scan for Irvine Valley College, one of the things that they looked at was the students enrolled currently in the fifth grade in our service areas, and they compared those numbers to the number of students enrolled in the 12th grade, noting that the students enrolled in the fifth grade would approximate that number that would be graduating in 2020. For Saddleback, again, as Juan stated, the service, for that service area, there is, according to this external scan, a minus 8.8% difference in the number of current fifth graders to 12th graders. And on the other hand, for IVC, there was a 14% difference as an increase. However, as I talked to the Director of Research at IVC, he said that, looking at some of that same data, he felt more comfortable indicating that our growth would be somewhere around 7% to 8%. But IVC plans to grow within the framework of our funding model.
As you looked at the enrollment trends, you know, overall trending up, but in the more recent trending down a little bit, there's some very specific enrollment management strategies both colleges have employed to try to get those numbers up. We talked about increasing sections. We talked about leveraging our technology, our Sherpa nudges, and sending our messages to students who were about to have regist- to students who were about to have registration appointments so that they are aware your registration appointment's coming up in three days, and such really prodding people along to make sure that we maximize some of that. We had a waitlist project, trying to get a sense of need and demand and trying to leverage that. So these are all very specific examples. Some, I think you've seen some very specific examples around targeted marketing, in particular the CTE magazine that went out for Saddleback is an example of that. We've done retention campaigns. We formed groups, trying to have as many different financial aid workshops, getting people through. So the whole push is taking individuals and nudging them through our system, getting them to enrollment. Now Linda will go through some very specific enrollment management strategies at IVC.
Thank you, Juan. At Irvine Valley College, the Student Support Services programs want to ensure that our first-time, our continuing and our potential students receive as much information as possible so that they can make data decision, data-driven decisions and appropriate decisions about their educational experience and ultimately achieve their goal. Many of the activities that we conduct in outreach, admissions and records and counseling are where we drive and support the enrollment management plan. But our activities are not just here and there. They are very focused and they are strategically planned. The Student Success Access Matriculation Marketing and Outreach Committee, better known as SAMO Committee, is our college-wide governance committee that oversees many of the activities from our outreach, admissions and records and counseling area. With the passage of SB 1456 and the requirement of our matriculation steps becoming mandatory, we've seen a tremendous growth in some of our areas. For an example, in advisement, students having to complete their educational plans. We have now gone from 130 appointments a day to 167 appointments, a 27% growth. And our admissions and records office now is accepting over 30,000 applications a year. 12,000 in the fall, 10,000 in the spring and about 8,000 in the summer. Although we yield about 48% of those students that actually become active students attending college, that is an awful lot of applications to process. And the same in our financial aid office. We are now up to receiving 5,000 applications a semester, yielding about 52% of those students that actually receive financial aid each semester. I'm proud to say that in October of this year, we had our first annual IVC mega outreach event, which I think will truly support our enrollment management in the future. Our goal was to ask 50 staff, faculty and administrators on this day to go out to 10 organizations and say hello to them, introduce ourselves to them, take a token of appreciation, a letter from our president, and let them know that we were there to serve. We actually received 55 volunteers at the college. We successfully visited on one day 426 organizations. We thought that was a very positive result. We returned to the college to give testimony about what had happened out in the field that day and to celebrate. Our deans, both Arlene Elsrode and Elizabeth Sepris, was responsible for helping me develop last year the IVC Connect Partnership Program whereby we established MOUs with selected high schools, Northwood High School and Beckman High School. We're very proud of those MOUs. And now we are going to enhance many of the services that we provide to the school, including financial aid workshops, admissions and admissions workshops, outreach quad sets. All of those events will be enhanced because of those established MOUs. You see a picture here of Anne Akers. She is our outreach specialist and for a long time has been the only person supporting outreach at IVC. Anne astonishingly went to over 300 events last year. Not sure how she did that, two and three sometimes in a day. But she's been fabulous, keeping our name out there. She also gives our campus tours and supports many of the events that happen on the campus, including the counselor's conference, the president's breakfast and many of our major events. I'd also like to thank our admissions and records department for coming up with a Fast Friday event. This was a new event for us last year. We had eight Fast Friday events whereby we invited our students and their parents to come a full, come visit and stay for a full day. They were able to get an assessment test, an advisement session and a campus tour, a parent orientation. The evaluations on these sessions were excellent, and because now we've received additional money under our student success and support plan, we're not only going to do eight, we're going to do 24 this coming year.
Much like IVC, Saddleback's involved in a number of the similar kinds of events. One example is freshman advantage. We both have that. We're looking to build on that as well with our summer refresh. We're also looking to do freshman advantage Fridays. What I want to do is kind of draw, go back to the notion of using, using the scan to guide what we do. And one of the things that we need to do at Saddleback, taking that insight, is we need to do a better job of managing the funnel. We talked about that as an enrollment management concept, which basically takes first point of contact all the way through. When we look at that for Saddleback, in general, it's been pretty much status quo. I mean, the idea, we have a lot of applications, we have a certain amount of yield, it's been in the mid-50s, but it's been pretty flat. And so typically, what that signifies is that we're doing much of the same in managing that yield. We haven't actively pursued it and looked to increase it. So we need to do a better job of getting in there, looking at that process, utilizing Sherpa where we can, build some systems where we have students go through application all the way to enrollment. And basically the same pattern for overall student applications as compared to also when we look at first-time freshmen. When you look at financial aid application to award, similar kind of thing. Number's been up and down, pretty much inertia has driven it. And so we need to get in there a little more closely, see why all those who submit an application don't actually make it all the way to award. And that's one way to get more out of our application pipeline. The other thing we mentioned is we need to get out there deeper into the pipeline. We mentioned that by 2020, the traditional age student for our population will decline. So we need to begin to do outreach as early as eighth grade and lower, to get those students ready so that by the time they're ready to come, we're addressing the issue of the population size. Same thing with our high school partnership programs. We've talked about it quite a bit. One of the major changes we did was create a brand-new division that specifically focused on leveraging those partnerships, providing more services and trying to get more students from our local community coming to Saddleback College. We've branched out to our local community. One thing we did this summer, major efforts with the Orange County Fair and San Clemente Ocean Festival. Once again, if we're going to keep track with our enrollments, we need to reach out to new populations, find ways to serve them.
As far as our retention strategies are concerned, we know that it's important that our students contact their counselors. This is one of the most crucial things that they can do. So advisement for short-term and long-term plans is extremely important. We know that our students continue to need to be engaged. Therefore, when we established our ambassadors program at IVC this year, we did that with the purpose of high engagement for these students, and they are doing fantastic. They're showing up at many of the events, being visible, and they're even going to plan their own annual event to raise money for scholarships. And we continue to emphasize to our students in every way possible that it's important for them to seek tutoring, go to success workshops and participate in as many work-study groups as possible.
And then finally, to wrap up, forecasting what students need is partly a science, partly an art, but we have Sherpa giving us predictive analytics. Thank you, South Orange IT. We also have waitlists now, which are giving us great data about how many students are trying to get into classes but cannot find room. And with that, we'll turn to questions, and we hope we have your answers today.
Okay, so I had a couple items. First of all, just want to make sure we highlight again Chancellor Portner's information earlier that this was a request for information from Trustee Milchker.
Yeah.
So thank you for your patience, and it's being deferred for two months since it was other things going on. And also, just going back to the information you had on the projection, I believe it was, looking for my note here, page 15, the environmental scan that felt that there was going to be this decline in Saddleback and only a slight increase in IVC. And I see in the next slide, it explains kind of why you think that. It seems to be, just for me personally, it seems to be very limited scope of data. Doesn't seem to account for all of the construction that is going on around the area, especially in the IVC area. And just see if you can maybe speak to if there is more information that's not being reflected here that we're not seeing.
Yes, there is. There's a larger report that our research offices have, and we can, every year, the president hosts meetings with the local high school principals. And beyond relations with the high schools, we also have the different planning department, building tracks, all of those models. We also have a growing population at UCI that is increasingly not able to serve all the students who apply to them. We know that we get some of that pickup. IVC's enrollment this fall actually grew about 5%, but that was not a permanent trend. It was one of those shifts that happened. We opened up some more sections, as did Saddleback, and picked up some more students.
Thank you. And then just wanted to mention, I know, oh, I'm sorry, you have more?
I was going to say that we've done similar research and also looked at the population city by city. At the moment, we're seeing a decline from what we saw in the census data that the environmental scan was based on in the vast majority of the cities in our service area. What we are doing is, you know, monitoring the growth and the other factors, but we can't count on population and the way we've always worked to attract students. We're looking at stronger retention, the ability to attract new students who might not have come to us, and we're going to probably have to fill our enrollment that way for a while.
And I just wanted to mention, it was very nice to see, Tustin Unified School District has the College and Career Fair, and we did see representatives from both Saddleback and IVC there, including Anne Akers was there. And I know she did a tour for eighth graders from a middle school locally as well. So I've seen the outreach you guys are doing, and it looks good. Looks like it will hopefully bear fruit. All right, I have a...
Mr. President?
Yes.
So I think that the names have not yet...
Yeah, I'm just going to mention that.
So various requesting...
System is saying that I have a request to speak from Trustee Milchker.
Yeah, yeah. Was somebody else first or...
I don't know. I'm not sure which, because when Trustee Jamal pushed his, it came up as Trustee Padberg. So there's still, there's still some issue there.
I see some IT people in the audience.
And Trustee Wright came up as Jamal. So I think Milchker's, for some reason, is correct. So Trustee Milchker has a request to speak.
Yeah, first of all, I want to thank everyone for, you know, for going along with having this report. I thought it was very important, and I am very pleased with it. I think it's very comprehensive and very well done. I know I talked to Jane Rosenkranz, the head of A and R at Saddleback College some time ago, and I mentioned to her, I think it would really be a good idea if they sent out emails to students to alert them that their appointment to register is coming up. And she said, you know, that's a good idea, we'll do it. So she did it. So I, and as you know, I'm also a perpetual student, so I have gotten my appointment to register and have gotten several reminders, and it's a good thing. It's a really good thing. So I also attend the South Orange County Economic Coalition in the area, and some of the people were talking about the incredible growth in the housing developments here. So it sounds like you're on top of it, though, but there are some people from some of the areas that monitor that growth that said they would talk to me and we could talk to them too about this, but it sounds like you're monitoring it. One of the things I was concerned about was with the Student Success Act of 2012, there are so many different parts of it that, for instance, the student cannot repeat their classes and repeatability is down and there, and just many, many regulations. And I knew it would affect our student population because students are very disappointed that they can't take classes over and over again. So dealing with this is really important. And once again, Jim Gaston is there. I think Sherpa is a great idea, to have the nudges of our students to make sure our students succeed. I think if we get the word out how great these colleges are, the people will be lining up to attend it, just like they have in the past. Irvine Valley College has the number one transfer rate in the state, and Saddleback College is close behind. I think Saddleback College has the number one transfer rate to UCLA. If the students get into our community colleges, they have guaranteed transfer to the UCs. They could get great jobs in the community. Our nursing program, as you said, number one in the state and maybe the nation. We have incredible CTE programs and we, another thing that's so important is, it's in the news now that the student debt is the number, is the second highest debt of any debt that there is now. I don't know how they calculate that, but it's like a billion dollar, a trillion dollar student debt. When we say our students get student aid, we get scholarships, they can graduate without having any student debt and go on to the second part of their post-secondary education with a great education. I think the students will be rushing, as they do now, to come here and stay here. So thank you.
All right, thank you. So I believe the next request to speak is Trustee Wright.
Thank you, President. I just had two quick items to ask questions about. One was, how are you using the waitlist? I'm glad that we've seen the waitlist program come back. I've been after it for years, and finally, it is finally happening. Now, how do you use the data there?
Well, just, the waitlist is finally online and being used by a very large percentage of faculty.
We were always trying to use it in math and always in the sciences.
And so very recently, we got our very first reports, and there were some glitches in the reports that have since been fixed since they were reported. So we're now using the data to plan out next year's enrollment patterns.
Good, good.
And it's very important that we do that.
And the second question I have is on classroom utilization. Are you going about addressing this? Because I walk around campus every once in a while, I see a lot of empty classrooms that aren't being utilized.
That's right. That's always something that's a concern because an empty classroom is not something that is promoting student access. So if it's between 8:00 in the morning and 2:00 in the afternoon, we do expect the rooms to be fully utilized. Late afternoon, not so much, and then again in the evenings. So we monitor that very carefully at IVC.
And that's an area we're working on in our scheduling process and getting everybody working together. We've got some unique facilities challenges with ATAP being moved down to the Village. We're going to be, you know, closing out the Village in terms of room utilization this summer, so we need, you know, all the classrooms to be used in a block-scheduled formula, making sure that we've got them filled consistently so that we can offer the number of sections that we need to offer.
This is one building here, the Health Sciences Building, that I've always worried about because I'll see empty classrooms quite often.
Something we're working on. And I'm sure we'll be successful.
Okay. I believe the next one is Trustee Jamal.
Okay. All right. Thank you for your presentation. So you have on page seven identified these market segments. They're really, I mean, they're clearly different types of audiences here. Have you prioritized these segments, and do you have strategies for identifying the challenges in reaching out to all of them?
Let me go to the page first.
Which page? Page seven of the PowerPoint presentation.
Right. We are reaching out to each of these different groups. Part of this is through our Equity Plan, which we'll be hearing about more tonight, that will outline specific populations of students that are not currently attending and the numbers that we would like to have them, particularly those with backgrounds that are very diverse, with our regular students. We are aggressively seeking to bring in recent high school graduates through our K-12 outreach partnership programs. We are working closely with the K-12s also on adult education, the AB86 efforts. We are working closely with the K-12s also on adult education, the AB-86 efforts, the CTE efforts. We've done a lot of recent marketing to showcase all of the programs that we offer as opposed to specific ones. And currently, we're working on a total web redesign, which I think will allow us to highlight some of the more unique features of each of those programs and provide more information about them. For all of these areas, we know what our current population is, but we're developing targets, so that as we move forward, we'll be able to go through in a systematic way, using the information that we have from waitlists and historical information, and, you know, hopefully, in the near future, focus groups and other processes. At Saddleback College, we just filled an enrollment management position with a scheduling and enrollment management analyst. So, the woman's been here a week, and I'm looking forward to some great data.
So, would you say that the list here is actually in order of priority and importance for you, starting from the top, even though they're not numbered?
I think they're different at both colleges.
Okay.
We place, for example, a much lower emphasis on international student recruiting, but we benefit from IVC's high numbers of students in that field. And we have far more CTE programs, and I'm hoping that they're going to be benefiting from that as a rider, so that if they've got students who need CTE courses that they can't accommodate, they send them our way.
IVC?
Yeah, I mean, at IVC, this is very largely in order of priority, except CTE is embedded throughout, so too is transfer. Each of the segments will have a degree of attention brought to it, and that will be done simultaneously. Typically, what you do with a marketing expert, I've used Claris Corporation in the past, you do a gap analysis, and if you find that you could be reaching out to skill enhancement students numbering 1,500 a semester, but you've only got 500 enrolled, that's where you can direct some of your marketing. So, this is a continuous basis, a continual project, but largely, we do give some priority to our recent high school graduates who matriculate. They do get the highest priority in registration, one of the highest. But all of the CTE, transfer, and basic skills are the three broad missions of the college. So, that's just plugged in the middle there, so to speak.
Okay, and I just have one additional question on the slide 13, or, sorry, dropped my glasses. Slide 13, I think, The Perfect Storm. It seems to me there are challenges here that we can address and that are within our control, and some that are not. I can't control the number of high school graduates, I don't think we can control that.
We can influence it.
We can influence it, but we can't control that necessarily. But certainly, technology glitches is something we can control. So, are there, the problems identified here, are there ones we're dealing with immediately that we can resolve?
Anything that came up, we were able to get resolution very quickly. There were just things we didn't anticipate. For example, with the registration priorities, for example, we had people registering at rates that we had never seen before. They seemed to be slow and drawn out, and trying to figure out exactly why that was happening was kind of a mystery, because things had changed behind the scenes and across the district and college landscape. So, we weren't able to do any kind of comparisons that had any meaning with prior year's data, historical information that we would have normally used to guide where we were in the process. And it was different for both colleges. So, some of that, we're still trying to sort out, so that we can make sure that next term it's a lot smoother and cleaner, and we know exactly what we're expecting. But there were weird little things, and most of them were like one-offs. A student had the ability to do a trial run at signing up for a course. And we had created families for the repeatability. So, if you were taking a class in art, for example, you had a family of this many courses, and you could repeat up to three times, or take up to three times, repeat twice. A student eligible for repeat was denied registration, and it had something to do with some weird glitch in how the families were set up, or the numbers of courses in the families. So, those kinds of things did get worked on and fixed, but just add that to all of the other things that were going on, which were probably more major in the scheme of things, just really threw us.
Thank you. Trustee Lang?
Yes, I noticed that you mentioned on one of the slides, I think it was number four, that online education is a component of enrollment management. I know that that area is getting a lot more competitive. I'm wondering how you see that fitting into our particular system here? Are we planning on offering more robust online education courses? I know some courses lend themselves a little bit better than others. Just some thoughts about that.
This is an area where we're working with Baper Muji and District Services to try to come up with a plan to enhance with outreach and specific marketing. We are looking at increasing and improving the success rates of courses in this area, largely with staff development. We've got a staff development center, the Faculty Center for Student Success, that you've heard before about, staffed with faculty, ready to help faculty, who are willing to try or are currently offering online courses, so that they can improve student success. At Saddleback College, we're involved in the Online Education Initiative, offering the tutoring component, the online tutoring, that we're believing will be able to help us retain students. Students self-select for online courses, and they're not successful for a variety of reasons. We want to make sure that we find out exactly what those reasons are, lack of preparedness for a technology-type, technology-based course, lack of time management, whatever it is, and provide them with assistance that will help direct them, so that they can be successful. The way we're going to get more students through this and increase access, particularly for people who are active military, are not able to attend a traditional face-to-face on-campus course, is going to be through online education. This is a big part of our plan.
Okay, so no more requests to speak? Thank you very much for your time. All right, next, we have presentation 4.2, 50% Law and Faculty Obligation Number. This is actually two issues that came up at the listening sessions, being combined into one, because they're essentially connected.
Giving this presentation this evening will be Vice Presidents Carol Hilton, Devi Kachatrian, and myself. So, why are we presenting? As we already said, it's not growth at the board listening sessions, where questions arose regarding the 50% law and the FON. And these are state requirements for the California Community College, very specific to community colleges. We'll be reviewing what each of these requirements are and why they're in place, as well as comparing ourselves against the measurements, as well as with other college districts. What is the 50% law and FON? First of all, both are requirements of the state, one from ED Code and one from Title V, and the purposes of them are to ensure adequate number of instructors and instructional expenses. There are two different requirements, and they not measure the same thing at all, and they're both monitored by the California Community College District, I mean, Community College Chancellor's Offices, and they're submitted at different points in the year. Both calculations are measuring the floor, so it's the minimum requirement for the community college districts. And it's a district-wide measure, not college-specific, although we do keep track of them per college as well. And these measures support accreditation efforts, specifically the eligibility requirement 13 for faculty and Standards 3A2. Okay? With that, we'll give you Devi Kachatrian for 50% Law.
Good evening. 50% law is defined in Education Code 84362, and it requires that community college district spends at least half of their current expense of education for classroom instructors. This law was enacted in 1976. Current expense of education is defined as unrestricted general funds, so it doesn't include categorical restricted projects, and is, it has certain exclusions, and those exclusions are capital projects, equipment transfers out, doesn't include lottery expenditures, and student transportations, rentals, health center expenses, and there are certain program codes that are also excluded, and the ones that are used in the calculations are ranging from 100 to 6799. Slide four shows the calculation itself. The area in the green is the numerator, and that is essentially the salaries and benefits of classroom instructors, and, you know, full-time and part-time, as well as instructional aides, lab tech positions, also full-time, part-time, with their related benefits, and also instructional service agreements. That is, that comprises the numerator, which is then divided by the denominator, which is the current expense on education that I mentioned on the previous slide. That calculation needs to be at least 50% for the district as a whole to comply with the 50% law. Slide five shows some of our historical calculations going back to 2009, 2010, and you can see that the calculation has been ranging between 51 and a half to 52, low 52%. You see a little asterisk for 2012, 13. That, for that year, the statewide average of, among all the districts, was 51.5%, and South Orange County ranked number 21 out of 72 districts. How does the colleges and the district track 50% law to make sure that we stay in compliance with the requirement? Of course, number one, we, especially fiscal officers, have 50% law in mind when making recommendations at the college level, and budget, you know, budget decisions are made accordingly. Secondly, something that we started a couple, a few years ago, is that DRAK, which is this District Resource Allocation Committee, monitors the 50% law calculations on a monthly basis. It's important to note that the calculation, it matters at the end of the year, what the calculation is, the June 30th. However, because there are fluctuations throughout the year, we keep a close eye on how the calculation sort of evolves and changes throughout the year, and we compare those numbers with prior years, similar or same months, to make sure that the pattern is predictable and we can project forward what the June 30th calculation is going to And at the end of the year, there is a report that's submitted to the Chancellor's Office. However, before that, the report, as part of the 311 financial report, is submitted to the Board of Trustees of the district, so the board has an opportunity to review the calculation before it's submitted to the state as well. There is an exemption process from the 50% law, although it's used quite infrequently by districts. You can kind of see that the dates and the requirements for that, there is a requirement for a public hearing if a district chooses to request an exemption from the 50% law, and then the findings are reported to the Chancellor's Office. And like I said, it happens very infrequently. With that, I would like to turn over to my colleague, Carol Hilton, to talk about full-time FON.
Thanks, Devi. Good evening. Full-time faculty, otherwise known as FON, this is regulated through Title V, and what it requires is that the district increase its full-time faculty to match the funded growth in FTEs, and I say the funded growth in full-time equivalent students. So, the base year for this was all the way back in 1988, and then, that number is used as a base, and then, as each district grows and funded FTEs, they're required to add a certain number of faculty. And so, fast-track all the way to 2014, and that number's grown quite a bit for districts statewide. So, every year, the district, sorry, the state publishes FON numbers for the districts, and the FON numbers are what we have to meet. If a district does not meet that faculty obligation number, then there will be a penalty. And the penalty at this point, which changes and also goes up, is 73,057. So, there really is no incentive for a district not to reach its FON number, because you still have to educate those students, and you still have to pay for faculty, even if they're part-time faculty. And in addition, you have to pay the 73,000. There's no discount for what you're paying for the part-time faculty. So, it does actually cost you more not to meet the FON number. So, how do we calculate the full-time FON number? Well, really, it is all faculty. So, every faculty member that we have in the district, instructional, and the classroom faculty, librarians, counselors, they're all considered full-time faculty. However, if those individuals teach overload, extra classes, that is not counted. So, it's really the contract basis, the contract with the full-time faculty member. So, in addition, if those faculty are on sabbatical, if they're on unpaid leave, then they still count as a faculty. However, let's say we have a full-time faculty member taking a year sabbatical leave, we may need to replace with a one-year full-time faculty member because of the discipline, that person does not count. So, even though we're paying two faculty, only one counts. So, it's the faculty member we have the contract with. In addition to that, if we have faculty that resign or retire within 45 duty days prior to the end of the spring term, that faculty member counts in the following year. The reason being that we can't hire faculty that quickly, and the state knows that. And so, there is, so really, from early April on, if you have a faculty member retire or leave, you're not expected to replace that position. So, how are we doing in this district? Well, here we have an eight-year snapshot of where we are at with our FON in South Orange. And on the left side, you will see the years, and then, the next column is the calculated FON. The calculated FON is what the state told us, that the number that we had to have. I'm sorry, the number that is calculated based upon the number of full-time equivalent students. However, you'll see the required FON for the years 2009 through 2013 is different. And the reason that is different is because the state had budget issues, and they did not fully fund districts. And so, there are a lot of districts experiencing budget issues. So, what happened is the FON was frozen in 2009, and that was frozen by the Board of Governors. They have the ability to do that. So, every year, the Board of Governors will ask whether there's adequate funds or not to fund the FON number in the system, and that districts are adequately being funded, and if they're not, they can freeze the number. So, all the way through till 2013, that number was frozen. However, this year, the Board of Governors said the FON is no longer frozen, and so therefore, district had to meet the FON obligation. The good thing for us is that we continued to look at that FON number all the way through those years, and if you will see in the far two columns, it shows our actual faculty obligation number achieved, and that in the far right-hand column, we were actually over the FON requirement in this district all of those years. So, that was a good thing. There were some districts that were not, and so, when the Board of Governors unfroze the number for this year, there were some districts that fell short and really, and had to pay the state. So, in summary, then, why would we all of those eight years if we didn't have to? Why would we? Well, first of all, we don't want to, we knew the Board of Governors could unfreeze that at any moment, and, you know, we meet regularly in the fiscal team meetings, and we also have like a FON ad hoc committee, and we talk about this in DRAK. And so, we didn't want to be faced with hiring 50 faculty overnight when every other district and the state is looking for faculty. That wouldn't be a smart thing to do. But the most important thing is that we know we need full-time faculty in our district for student success, and we want full-time faculty. And so, therefore, we continued regardless of budget challenges to keep our faculty numbers up and to exceed our FON numbers in the district. So, with that, I will turn over to Deborah.
One thing I wanted to mention is, as we review the FON and 50% law, we do work with the Vice Presidents of Instruction and both Vice Presidents of Administration at the campuses, so that we can ensure that we're closely monitoring where we're projecting enrollment to be, and then make sure that FON is keeping up. It's calculated by, the FON is calculated by the Human Resources Department under David Begay, and the 50% law is calculated by Kim Accord, and of course, we work closely together as we do it every month. With that, we'll take some questions, if you have any.
Okay, first, we have a request from Trustee Jamal.
Thank you, Trustee Prendergast. Thank you all for your presentation. On, might I understand, on, I don't, there's no page numbers here, but the number calculated for us and for our district in 2013 to 2014 is 50- for us and for our district in 2013 to 2014 is 51.45%. Now, that's a district-wide number?
Yes, that is a district-wide number.
So did both colleges exceed the 50% level?
Yes, they did.
Okay. And then, my other question was, what are the consequences to districts for not meeting this requirement?
For the 50%?
Mm-hmm.
We do, as you know, you have to, it's very public as far as what has to happen if you don't meet it. You have to request a waiver process if you do not meet it, and it's through a public hearing, and it's pretty, pretty onerous. So basically, districts really want to meet 50%. Yes.
So the, I'm just saying, is there, is there anything punitive in it? Is there a penalty?
Yeah, 73,000.
Well, that's a FON.
Yes, go ahead.
We've been, yes, we've been studying this for quite a while, and I remember at some point getting into the actual ed code and some, what are the penalties are, and I believe my recollection and my understanding is that the state withhold some of the funding, and they would only release it if you make up for the shortage in the previous year, and they would release the funding in that year.
Right. And because we are a basic aid district, they still can withhold funds, they could still bill us and withhold funds from other categorical programs, other funds, not necessarily our apportionment, because we don't receive that from the state, but it's still possible.
Thank you.
All right. I just had a quick question on the FON, dealing with the, the numbers that we had during the freeze, and just express a huge thank you for that pragmatism that the committees and everyone involved held, because, yeah, I can't imagine going through what you're indicating some districts must be going through. So thank you very much on behalf, I believe, on behalf of the board. So that's all I had.
There's some people out there.
Oh, yes.
Yes, I'd like to just make one comment in regards to the FON, because it wasn't mentioned in the presentation. The FON is based upon, and I don't know how many, if you know this, but the FON is based upon the idea that came out of AB 1725, that there be 75% full-time faculty and 25% part-time faculty. At some point, it was determined that districts didn't have the finances to immediately go to that number, and so the idea behind the FON is that it would incrementally get to that number, but the ideal is that we get to 75% full-time faculty. And the FON is making it actually be quite slow to get to that point. There are some districts, depending on when that number was frozen, that are at 75%. There are other districts that are at 60%. We're at just barely, you know, slightly over 50% with our FON number. So the ideal, though, and what we would like to see happen, because I think it is in the best interest of our students, is to get to that 75% full-time faculty number. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee J.
Yeah, I just think you've done a great job getting to 22.2 surplus faculty above the FON requirement, because for years, we didn't have that. And plus, now you're doing it with, instead of waiting till the end of the year and then figuring the whole darn year, a month-by-month tracking prevents a lot of that difficulty. So really, you've done a pretty darn good job of controlling it, much better than it used to happen. We'd bounce around for years, fooling around with 50% or 49.6 or something, and 51, and, you know, all those numbers, and it's very difficult to straighten out if you're not right in the first place. Then, because you are meeting this onerous board, and I don't know who all is on it, but they're, they're not excited at all when you fail to meet that. You've got to get to that every doggone year and keep track of it during the month-to-month and as you're working through the year. So it's, it's a lot better improved. Now, the 75% is another matter, though, because we all know that if you take all of the part-time faculty that we've got, the pay rate is about one-third what it is for full-time faculty. And full-time faculty do do a lot of things that, of course, part-time faculty don't have to do. But nevertheless, it's, it would be extremely difficult to get to 75% now. You either have to go back and cut full-time salaries hugely to provide more of the, to get to the 75%. So when that 75% was hoped that we'd incrementally, year by year, hey, it just didn't happen. So now, we're dealing with this 50% FON. So anyway, it's, it's a very interesting study in enrollment figures and how we're going to get there. I personally don't see it, unless the state decides to dump a huge amount of money into part-time salaries. And the only place they could get it is to take it out of full-time salaries, unless the state came up with a huge tax increase, you know, so that the overall tax base increased dramatically. And in the current climate, that ain't going to happen. I, you know. So anyway, it's all done with, of course, the best motivation, purest driven snow, that we want to get to a 75% rate, but it's an awfully tough road to hoe. And you can look at all the districts, and, you know, they're, what are they, 51, 52, occasionally 53 or more, but rarely. So anyway, good work, though, because if you're at, if you've got 22.2, you know, requirement now, that's terrific compared to where we're fighting with 50% for years and years and years. Anyway, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
I did, I did want to mention one other thing that we forgot to mention, and that was that we had these results despite having the faculty early retirement incentive plan take place, because what really that does is, we immediately lost over 50 faculty members in one year. And that was a significant impact to both measures, although it impacted it differently in different years. Of course, we had a plan for that, for filling those positions, of course, but it was that on top of everything else. So it was really challenging, and we had to balance that, working with HR, working with the colleges, and making sure that we stayed on track in our hires, for a variety of reasons, of course, and student success being the most important one, but also to make sure that we stay on track with all the other requirements at the state. But for instance, in 50%, it reflected in latter years, because we did pay the retirement incentive plan for those couple of years at the beginning. Where FON impacted it immediately. So again, all these decisions do impact the district in a variety of ways, and it's balancing all that, including our enrollment management together, to really make good decisions based on data. So we really appreciate that.
This district is in an odd position, because clearly, if you retire people, who are usually at the top of the schedule or closer, or close to that, why, what do you have to do? Well, you got to go out and buy, and we did, that year, we, I think it was around 50 full-time faculty. They were new faculty, though, that to us, because of the limitations of years of experience at that time, that we could, we could award to new faculty, whether they were experienced and whether they had 50 years' experience or not, you know, there was a district limitation. And, but still, we hired a huge, we retired people hugely, over 50, as I recall, but we had to hire almost every one of them back.
Oh, yeah.
And, and it's great, because you get a person with a shiny new master's degree or a doctorate, and, you know, it's their first year or two or three of teaching, and it's a great money saver for the district. It's also very unpleasant to somebody who comes in from other districts, and they have a huge amount of experience, and we can't give them credit for all of it, so. But fascinating stuff to work with these figures.
All right, thank you very much. Seeing no more requests to speak?
Kathy, Kathy, has her hand up?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Just very briefly, I'd like to speak to one of the questions that the, I don't remember by now who asked. Somebody asked about whether the colleges maintain, whether both colleges were over 50%. And several years ago, some of you might remember, we actually came, it looked as though we were not going to make the 50% law, this was when Gary was deputy chancellor. And we formed a district-wide group to address how to, to address these issues and to figure it all out, and at that time, agreed that there would be benchmarks for each of the units, the two colleges and district services, that if each of those units met that benchmark of proportionality, that the district as a whole would be healthy. And so, obviously, the only numerator, as we call it in the biz, the instructional stuff only happens at the colleges. In fact, both of the colleges carry district services in the sense of the 50% law.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have the consent calendar. Are there any polls from 5.0?
Yes.
Okay.
5.1 and 5.8.
5.1 and 5.8.
Mr. President, I think we need to move the consent calendar, don't we?
Well, we're, we're seeing if there's any polls first.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
I'd like to poll 5.7.
Was that your request to speak to do that?
Yes.
Trustee Wright? So we can pull that. Any other polls? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for the consent calendar minus those items. I have a motion and a second.
Second.
5.1, 5.7, and 5.8. The motion is for the balance of the consent calendar minus those items. With that, we'll go ahead and vote.
Is the voting aligned up? Do we know that?
The voting's by name, it doesn't matter. Or maybe it does. Trustee J.
Oh, did he push?
Oh, I'm sorry. She's gone. Needs to step out.
Yeah, so we'll just count that as absent. So we have, or do we need to, like?
Do I need to push the button?
Well, but you can't vote for somebody. There's no absent button. Abstention, yeah, we'll do that and count it as absent in the record. So we have six yes votes, one abstention, or one absent vote, and one student advisory yes vote. Thank you. So trustee Jamal, you polled 5.1.
Yeah, I polled the minutes. I'm not sure if this is the right place to do it, but I'm, I'm thinking it is. I had, I had asked a question at the previous board meeting about information technology consultant services contract with NUDESSIC, and whether this was actually a $5 million contract. And I did question whether it belonged in the consent calendar, and my understanding is that the answer provided could have been a little more precise. So I'm asking Vice Chancellor Fitzsimmons to respond to that.
Yes, just for clarification, trustee Jamal is referring to last month's item 5.10, which was the information technology consultant services for NUDESSIC, and it was an approval item. It doesn't have a dollar amount on it at this point in time, because what it is, is a master agreement for the company. They went through a formal RFP process, and they were selected as the winning proposer, and it is based on time and materials. Now, what we plan to do, it is a contract, you did approve that agreement last month, but what it means is, as you know, NUDESSIC does IT work, we go through a basic aid process every year, it's an annual process, we bring those recommendations for projects that are submitted by the colleges and the district services through a formal process through AR 3110. And as, there is a need for services that NUDESSIC would provide, in the agreement on page 26, I think it was, yes, of 27, there was an order form, a work order form. Now, as the projects are identified, that would be filled out, we would have then a dollar amount for that project, and we bring that back per item as appropriate to the board. So that's basically how that process would work.
Right, so the minutes are reflecting that it was indeed a contract we did approve?
Yes, the minutes did reflect that already, but that's just clarification on process.
Okay.
Second.
Second.
All right, so I have a motion from trustee Lang and a second from trustee J to move approval for 5.1. Go ahead and vote on the item.
You have to push it again.
Trustee J.
I got it, I got it.
Yeah, push it again. I, I can't make my button.
There it goes. Now you're absent. She's back, and it says absent.
I'm back.
There's another on there, too.
All right. All right, let's do it. Try it one more time.
All right.
No, still.
I would be for it.
Okay. Let the record show that we have seven yes votes and one student advisory yes vote, an oral vote from trustee Patr. Okay. Trustee Wright, you had polled 5.7.
The only reason I pulled that is I wanted to know if the waterproofing project was successful this time. Have we had any problems?
I'll have Brandy Delano, our executive director of facilities and construction, come up and discuss that.
Hi, so you all know we had a good test of it this last week with the pouring rains, and there were no leaks.
Okay, good.
However, we'll leave the, the project open for the full year, just to give it the whole season, and then next year, we'll be closing the money and putting it back in basic aid, hopefully.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Move approval.
Second. I have a motion to approve.
Panoply of seconds.
And a second. We'll go ahead and vote on the item when we get a chance.
Nothing's happening.
Nothing's, yeah, it's not popping up yet.
We're having some technical difficulties.
All right, while we're, while we go ahead and take an oral vote on that item, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. We have a unanimous yes vote, seven yes votes, and one student advisory yes vote. Next, we have trustee Jamal polled 5.8.
Yes, so very quickly, Vice Chancellor Fitzsimmons and I had some conversations today about this item, architectural services for the stadium project, and I'm just wondering, the firm we selected, I know, was not the lowest bidder. I know we're not required to take the lowest bidder, but there was a considerable difference between the two. If you just could elaborate a little on the higher price selection.
And I see Brandy standing by to answer that question, since she was involved in the process, I'll go ahead and refer to her.
And my understanding was both of them were interviewed, correct?
Yes, they were. There were three firms that provided us with proposals, and one was not interviewed, two were, and as you stated, one was lower than the other. When we get to the place of selecting a firm, we select on qualifications first, and then we go into negotiations with that firm based on the prices that all three firms have provided to us, and then negotiate. If we see a big difference between one or another of the firms, for instance, in this case, the firm that we selected had a higher price to start with, and we negotiated about 25% of that price away based on a lower price. So the lower-priced firm was not the best value, determined to be the best value or best, have the best services that they could provide to the district. And what we're looking for in professional services is the best services. And then after that, we evaluate the fee for it. So I don't know if I've answered your question yet.
I'm hearing is, even though there was, even though two were invited to interview, and one was, one was not invited to interview, the second-place finisher, if you will, was considerably lower in terms of the quality of services that you were evaluating.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
This time, I'll entertain a motion for.
Second.
Second.
So a motion from trustee Lang, second from trustee Jamal. Looks like we can vote on this electronically again. And there it works. All right, seven yes votes and one student advisory yes vote. That brings us to 6.1, student equity plan report. Another report. I'm smiling. So this would be a continuation of the equity plan report we got last month. This is, I assume, the final plan that we approve.
Good evening. In October, we were here, provided an overview of the equity plan, the history, and what was part of this new effort. In November, we came and gave you a look at our In November, we came and gave you a look at our draft equity plan. And then now we're here requesting approval. You received a copy of our final document, and you received a copy of our PowerPoint. I'm not going to go through the entire PowerPoint. There's just a couple of areas I want to highlight. First and foremost, I want to thank all those who were involved in the project. Folks on the screen played leadership roles in this effort. I want a special thank you to Dr. Georgina Guy for a lot of her effort. Everyone on that page did so voluntarily. There was no compensation at all, even though it turned out to be a significant effort. As mentioned, even though equity plans have been part of our system, this is, in fact, the first year of this new re-envisioned plan that has these major components. We talked about it last time. There are very specific subgroups that all colleges are being asked to take a look at. It's all grounded in research. The metrics are the same. The subgroups are the same. The outcomes are the same, and it comes with money so that institutions can then take that analysis and then spring into action. So this is the first year of that effort. So the plan you have is, in a sense, our first-year plan, and every year we will build upon it. We talked about disproportionality and gaps. So the research identified areas where gaps in performance occurred, and then it was our responsibility to take a deeper look and then determine where do we want to invest our time and energy in the first year. I wanted to give you a general overview of where those efforts will be, and so that was the purpose of these next couple of slides. When we took a look and we looked at populations, cohorts that were larger than 20 students, because some disproportionate impact that came out was for very small sizes. So what we decided in those cases was, keep an eye on it, don't do anything now, and we'll monitor it as we go. But the items you have here are for populations that are much larger than that and areas where gaps occurred. So these were, these were the areas, the populations and the outcome areas where significant impact, disproportionate impact was found. And so in our first year, we have specific actions aimed at reducing that gap. We had a larger number of areas that were more moderate, so not the highest degree of gap, but a significant amount that warranted attention. And if you could tell, as you note by the, by the distribution, we have a number of different subgroups across a number of outcome areas. And so the plan you received is very specific information efforts for the major and the moderate. All the other items are not included in the plan. Those are things we'll consider in the future. And then the last thing, so what happens next is, the plan is before you for approval. If you approve tonight, we will be shipping the plan off to the chancellor's office by the end of the week to make it for the January 1st, January 2nd deadline. And then as soon as we come back from, from the break, we will be, we will begin to implement the plan. We have until September of this next year, September 2015, to implement and spend the money. And so in the spring, we're going to be bringing our groups together and beginning year two of the plan. And so, once again, it's the beginning of a number of efforts in this way. We're going to start with these major and moderate areas, and if you have any questions, we will entertain those now.
Yeah, we have trustee Jamal and trustee Wright's main screens are down, so trustee Wright has a request to speak.
I was looking at page 10 of your report. There was just some awkward language as I read it. Page 10 of 112. Though I didn't read the whole report, but I did read some of it.
Okay.
But what it says there, expansion of services, it says, "Look into hiring the need to hire." That's kind of awkward.
It is awkward. And what it, what that captures is there are a number of institutions that are, one of the allowable expenses is to hire a director to manage and coordinate these efforts. So many colleges are moving forward in hiring a full-time director. We're saying, let's take a look and see if we need that. And so in the first year.
What I'm saying here is that, "Look into the need."
Correct.
What you need, what's the word, "Hiring" there for?
The idea is, we're going to look to see if we need a director. So in the first year, the plan is to coordinate this all internally.
The language is awkward.
So we'll clean it up.
Yeah. I mean, it says, "Look into hiring the need to hire." Just say, "Look in to the need."
Consider hiring staff.
Correct.
Yeah.
We will, we will clean that.
And then I also had a similar comment on, just awkward, 13. It says, "Provide targeted outreach efforts on," I would prefer the word "toward."
Okay.
Just.
Thank you.
All right, so just to clarify, we're voting, or we need a motion to.
I move.
To pass the Exhibit A, the actual document, not the PowerPoint.
Correct.
Is what you're passing, so. And apparently, we're moving to pass that as amended.
Correct.
Okay. Seeing no more requests to speak, we'll go ahead and vote on the item. We have seven yes votes and one student advisory yes vote. Thank you very much. Next, we have 6.2, Collaboration Agreement with Workday. We'll get a understanding of this at the podium.
Good evening. This item before you, item 6.2, is a collaboration agreement between the district and Workday Incorporated, and it is an agreement for us to enter into a three-year partnership with them regarding Workday Student. This agreement has had extensive review, both internally with our staff as well as legal counsel, who has volunteered very actively in the review and also finalization of this agreement. So I'll make sure you knew that. Tonight, we have Director of IT for Academic Systems, Jim Gaston, and Barbara Mucci, who's the Vice Chancellor of Technology and Learning Services, and they're here along with me to provide a summary of this partnership. And with that, I'll give you Jim.
In 2005, this district set out to do something fairly unusual, not unprecedented, but certainly unusual for higher education. That is to build a custom student information system. The primary motivator for us in doing that was to build a student-friendly system. The major commercial packages were built in an era of mediated service prior to the Internet. They weren't really friendly for students to use. Many of you probably remember, like I do, back in the day when we would go register for classes, I went to a gymnasium and there were cardboard trays of punch cards, right? And you knew the class was full when there are no more punch cards left in there. Or perhaps later, you filled out a form and you passed it across a counter for an expert to type it into the system. The systems were designed for that kind of an era and weren't up to date. They certainly weren't student-friendly. That's not the world our students live in today, and we thought we could do better than that. And as you can see from these survey results, we did do better than that. The students have given our system a very high rating, as long with faculty and administrators as well. We're working on getting those numbers from managers and staff up. So we're proud of the results, but it's really important for you to understand that that achievement is not an achievement from district IT, and it's achievement from the literally hundreds of faculty, staff, managers, administrators, and particularly students that have participated with us on design teams and focus groups in fine-tuning this. As with any decision, there's pros and cons. The pro for this is we have the destiny in our own hands that we can design this for direct student use using modern technology built to our college's specifications, but there are some drawbacks to it. We don't have a community to plug into. We're the only ones using this system. There's a lack of community that our colleges can tap into, and there's also a relatively small number of people that know this system, and we're not getting any younger. And so we're concerned about that as well. So we've been looking, where do we want to be five to 10 years from now? What kind of system do we want, and how do we get there? Ideally, what we want is an approach that preserves the benefits of our current system, but eliminates or at least reduces the drawbacks to them. We believe we have that kind of proposal for you today, and Dr. Mucci is going to give you some more details about it.
Recently, after a comprehensive and inclusive selection procedure overseen by Vice Chancellor Deborah Fitzsimmons, we chose Workday to replace our aging HCM, Human Capital Management and Finance Systems. Well, Workday is now working on a student information system, to be called Workday Student, and they are partnering, or seeking to partner with institutions around the country. So we are one of those institutions that have been invited to partner as a strategic influencer. Thus, we would join institutions such as Yale University and the University of Texas at Austin and others. Now, why would we want to move to Workday Student? There are a number of reasons, but here are some of the larger ones. First is, we believe that they share our student-centered vision. Their students, they use students in the process of creating their software. They pay attention to them. An example is the mobile-first design philosophy. Most students are on their phone constantly in Workday. Rather than developing for desktop or laptop computers and then bolting on mobile or tablet as an afterthought, they develop primarily for the mobile devices first, which reflects the student experience today. They are a public company. They have over 700 customers on the free-market side and a growing practice in higher education that includes Yale, Cornell, Brown, Carnegie Mellon, and they just signed the Claremont, Claremont Colleges. We believe that the way that they implement the software is going to provide cost savings for us. One is they're a true cloud vendor. A lot of people call themselves cloud services providers, but aren't really. Another way that they do that is the reporting and analytics is very cleanly built into the product itself. But we think overall that we're going to get a better system for less money, and we're going to get the opportunity to shape that system as it is developed. Essentially, we have three different options. We can continue down the path we're going on. Our CIS has been successful. It has won national acclaim, but it is entering the second half of its lifespan. We built it at the time with Web 2.0 technologies, which were new at the time, but technology marches on, and it will be only a few more years before we would be looking at a major re-architecture of the existing system that we have now. The other two options both include Workday. We could just wait until Workday finishes the Workday Student System and then adopt it. But if we do that, we will lose out on all the incentives that Vice Chancellor Deborah Fitzsimmons is going to tell you about in a moment. So what we are recommending is that we choose the option to join the Strategic Influencer Program along with institutions such as Yale and UT Austin. Deborah?
So what is the value to us of the collaboration partnership to, with Workday? First of all, this three-year degree, this three-year agreement allows us to partner for three years. At the end of those three years, in 2017, we could choose to have the option to use this new software system, which we provided input to. The cost would be at a reduced rate of $726,000 a year guaranteed, and the standard price for a person coming in at that time without having been involved in a collaboration that we're going to be doing would be double that. Our current CIS budget, just to compare, is about $1.5 million a year. So right away, you can see that on an annual basis, there'll be savings to the colleges that they could use for other basic aid projects annually. We would also get another software component of Workday, which is called Big Data. We could start to use that now. That value is about $400,000 to a year as a collaborative partner, and we'll be paying just one fee of $170,000 as part of the price to be in the collaboration agreement. So over the time period that, for a seven-year period, if we were to continue to use Workday Student after the collaboration, we would be saving over $8 million compared to others who would be starting to do, entering into new agreements with Workday for use of their What we did was try to compare on a bar graph sort of the three options that Vice Chancellor Mucci already went over. The first bar is the custom CIS that we have already. And this, over that 10-year cost, you could see that it's probably over $30 million that we're spending on our homegrown system. The middle bar is if we went in and waited, which was option two, and chose to then select Workday Student later on. And again, that's up over the 40,000, $40 million range. And then the last bar on the right is if we enter the program now, and that would be what the 10-year cost would be, significantly reduced, as you can see by the diagram. If we choose to later on stay with Workday Student, of course, or with the homegrown student, it's significantly higher than if we were to be in this collaboration right now.
One thing we really want to emphasize with this is we've gone out and we've talked to all the major governance groups and various committees. We've presented this proposal. We've taken questions. There's widespread support at the colleges for this. But we also didn't want to make a commitment today to a system that isn't even built yet, that isn't even going to become commercially available in 2017. So we essentially negotiated an escape clause. What we're committing to today is a partnership over the next couple of years to work with Workday, to dedicate a relatively modest amount of time. And then in exchange, we'll get a price guarantee. We're not committing now to a system that isn't built yet. In 2017, when it does become commercially available, the colleges will evaluate it at that time, and we'll make that choice whether to move ahead.
Overall, we believe that this proposal will return millions of dollars of basic aid savings while positioning us better for the future. And in closing, I want to say, the only reason that we are even in this position is because of the continued support of not only senior leadership, but this board as well as previous boards, because this denotes a strategic direction that we undertook many years ago that is now bearing fruit. So we thank you for that.
I move approval.
Hold on. Are you guys done? Oh, because it doesn't say questions.
Questions that you might have right now.
All right. Just a very quick. I have a request to speak from trustee Lang first.
Oh, I can't request a speak.
Just a couple of different questions. What happens with respect to the existing proprietary products that we have created in our district in connection with this collaboration that you have with, with Workday? Are they going to wind up with the rights to that? Or maybe you could speak to that a little bit. My second question was, is just, I'm not certain that, you mentioned that this will eliminate, if we sign up for this, this basically would supplant the existing, like a million and a half-dollar budget that we have for technology, and I'm not certain that's quite true. We're still going to have other technology initiatives outside of Workday, and maybe you could speak to that a little bit as well.
Okay, I'll take the second question first. There are actually three sources of cost savings that I can see. The first is over 50% discounts in the software itself moving forward in perpetuity. The second is that we have a budget to support our CIS, and we believe that there's going to be savings every year because it will cost us less to support the new system. The third thing is, is Workday is building into this system some capabilities that we currently use third-party software for. And if those capabilities are deemed acceptable, we will be able to save those extra licensing products as well. Going back to your first question, we don't actually have, because we do not pursue software patents, we don't have intellectual property for sale in the things that we have created here. What Workday is seeking from us is design advice, because we're some of the only people in the country that have built these or similar systems. So there's, there's no intellectual property taking place. They will not own our intellectual property. They're merely seeking our design advice because we've been there.
Well, okay, so then I guess my follow-up question would be, are we planning on doing anything to, I guess, copyright or, I'm not using the right language, but protect our intellectual property rights? What's, what's the plan associated with that?
We are pursuing another deal. It is a very nascent deal, so we're not speaking about it this evening, but with Workday's full cooperation, we are in discussions with a startup firm funded by venture capitalists who seek to acquire the actual source code from our existing CIS minus the Student Success Suite, because they would not be competing against Workday. Workday is okay with that, so, but that is not a deal we are prepared to bring to you tonight.
Okay, thank you.
I believe next I had student trustee Correa.
Okay. So this is kind of an exciting thing for students as well, because they're going to be seeing this in, you said, 2017, right, when they start piloting this, this potential system, right? So, I mean, I, I think it's a wonderful idea. This is, this is, this could be the beginning of a, of a new thing, especially for the student information system, right? You said Yale's already involved in this program. So I, I think I see the vision here. I, I can see where it's going here, and I think it's, it's good to stay with the technological trend, especially towards mobile devices and other, other stuff. I mean, it's very smart. You know, you guys are thinking the right way. On behalf of the students, I can tell you that, because the students, you know, they think in another way as well. So I commend it, and thank you for, for really taking the time to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, student trustee Correa. And I think it's important to point out that we hire students to serve on our design teams, and they're an integral part of our design process, and that is one of the strengths that. that Workday, I think, is seeking from us.
Next, I had Trustee Jamal.
Trustee Lang covered my question on intellectual property. Thank you for doing that.
And then Trustee Wright?
Oh, I pushed it.
I'm going by people whose things weren't working. Thanks.
Okay.
You withdrew, so I didn't know.
No, I withdrew. I put down request to speak.
Now it's there. Trustee Milchker.
I don't see it.
It comes up as Jamal, because that's where he used to sit.
Okay. No wonder I didn't see it. Okay. Well, I think our IT department is incredible, and we really have been on the forefront of everything IT-related for as long as I could remember, which is for a long time. And our students definitely benefit from this. I like the idea of having an escape clause if we need to get out of it, and I like the idea of not committing before the project is built. It still is certainly very speculative. I wasn't sure, when you said if we sign up now, the Big Data, which is $400,000 a year, will be free in perpetuity? I didn't quite get that. How can you do that, you know?
Yes, there are two products that are called Big Data. One of them exists today, and the other, they are seeking our help to create. The product that exists today is Big Data for HCM and Finance. We will be receiving that for a one-time payment that is less than half of the cost to everyone else. However, the product that we are going to help them create, Big Data for Workday Student, we will receive free in perpetuity.
Wow, that sounds pretty good. And I also enjoy, when you look on your website, you have students actually demonstrating how to use various things that our students use, you know, like my site and different areas like that. So I know that you hire students, and I think it's a good idea that we have student input all the way along. So thanks.
Okay, Trustee Lang.
Yes, I had meant to preface my question to you gentlemen by indicating, while I appreciate your modesty, I appreciate even more the tremendous leadership that both you fellows and the rest of the folks in your department, you know, have to this district, what you've created, with this being just one example. You guys walk on water as far as I'm concerned, and with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve this item.
Okay, we have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Seeing no further requests to speak, we can go and vote on the item. We have a unanimous yes vote with one student advisory yes. Thank you very much for all of your time and energy on this. 6.3, Adopt Resolution Number 1441, Withdraw Membership in Schools' Excess Liability Fund. Do we have a? Wait for Deborah to come back.
I can approve the motion certainly, or make the motion to approve, but I do have a question.
Okay. Do we want? All right, so we have a motion from Trustee Lang, a second from Trustee Padberg, but we have a presentation from?
No presentation, just to review what this item is.
Okay.
We are in basically three programs for excess liability. From $0 to $1 million for our property and liability, we're in SWAC. From $1 million to $5 million, we're in SAFER. From $5 million to $30 million, we're in SELF. Now, years ago, a lot of community college districts were in SELF, and they have moved over to SWAC and SAFER. Matter of fact, when I go to the SWAC board meetings, we're the only district that's still in SELF. So it's been a long time since we reviewed our programs. We think there might be some gaps in coverage. So what this is, is notice SELF as required by the JPA, that we are going to go out and look at things, review and analyze the programs, and possibly not renew SELF. But that is not really known at this time until we go through the review.
Thank you. So we have a motion, a second. You still have a question?
I do.
Okay, Trustee Lang.
Sorry, wrong button. Okay, so I'm also looking at the financial statements, and I'm seeing the different joint powers agreements that we have, which look to me like there are five different ones. SWAC, SELF, PIPs, CISC, and AGCIG. SELF, the one we're talking about tonight, looked like it was the only one that had a loss during the last, I'm sorry, not this last fiscal year, but the fiscal year before. I'm not sure about the 6/30/2014 number. But they did have a healthy reserve, if you will, something like $36 million. So I would certainly want to make certain that any other program that we looked at was similarly financially sound. The one, though, that looked, I guess, a little more suspect to me was the, well, the PIPs numbers looked a little strange, frankly, in the financial statements, but then the AGCIG numbers, which I think had to do with the dental, the district's dental program, they had a fairly, they're upside down in terms of assets and liabilities. So I'm just wondering if you could talk about some of the other JPA programs at the same time, and are we taking a more serious look at some of those as well?
Right, I certainly can do that. In relationship to SELF, they are a pool that is primarily K through 12, and they have, more recently have, some reserves, but they had very, very thin reserves in previous years. They have a program where we don't give back as a district any kind of rebates back to us individually. Our rebate basically stays in the reserve and helps pay towards other districts. So that's a little bit of a concern, because we're basically helping other districts with our sort of funds that we're putting into the JPA, and sometimes that's how JPAs work. In regards to CISC, ASCAP, and PIPs, I could do a review of those and certainly report back to the board at the time that we do the SELF analysis and share insights into that. I know the one we had a Workday program, and there were some issues in some previous years as well. So I can do that.
I would find that to be an interesting report. I don't know how my colleagues feel.
Yes, absolutely. All right, so we have a motion.
No, the motion has been approved.
Yeah, we had a motion and a second. We'll go ahead and, seeing no more requests to speak, we'll vote on the item. We have seven yes votes, with Trustee Jamal acting in proxy for Trustee Wright, who told him how to vote, and one student advisory vote.
Mr. President?
I would like to offer a motion to extend the meeting to 9:30 PM.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Oh, joy. We'll go ahead and vote on that item. No vote for Trustee Wright again. Just abstain.
See, Wright's gone.
There we go.
He didn't.
I appreciate that. There's not much we can do about it. All right, so we have five yes votes, one abstention, and one no vote with one student advisory yes vote. Thank you. Okay. Item 6.4, Board Policy Revision. This is for accept for discussion and approval.
No changes to the item.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Move approval.
We have a motion from Trustee Lang and a second from Trustee Wright. Seeing no requests to speak, we'll go and vote on the item. Seven yes votes, one student advisory yes vote. Item 6.5, Board Policy Revision. This is for review and study. So I need a motion.
Move to accept for review and study.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion from Trustee Lang and a second from Trustee Padberg. We'll go ahead.
I have a question, though.
And we have a request to speak from Trustee Jamal.
So my, I have a question on the Board Policy 104 with reference to the student member of the Board of Trustees. And my question is regarding the, one of the criteria, which is a minimum GPA, cumulative GPA. Looking forward prospectively, I mean, are we able to modify this, the current designation, which is 2.0, to serve on this board? And, you know, I don't know how my colleagues feel about it, but I frankly feel that that number should be a little bit higher to serve on this board. And I think that, you know, they have a lot of responsibilities that comes with serving on this board, and they're not maintaining their academic standards, a little bit higher standards, then perhaps this isn't the right venue for them. So do you have any? Who responds to? Who is going to respond?
We can take this back to the Board Policies and Administrative Regulation Council and have them take a look at that grade point average requirement for the Board Trustee for the students and see if it is recommended to be increased. That's no problem whatsoever. We can do that.
Thank you. I actually would be interested in hearing Student Trustee Correa's kind of take on this, and as well as getting some sort of idea, are students on the panel that reviews this particular item to have input? Right, so minimum, I think it should be about 3.0 and above. I mean, that's like what a B standard average, you would say, in a classroom setting. So I think at least a 3.0. Personally, I have a 3.6, so I'm being held at a higher standard than a 3.5, A-, so I think 2.0 is a little too low, just because the trustee position should be held at a higher standard. So academically speaking, at least 3.0 would be acceptable.
Well, we can certainly take that back and have the council take a look at your recommendations.
Take into consideration. Thank you. Does anybody have an answer to the second part of my question, which is, are students involved in the decision, and do they have a take on this?
Yes, just so you know, the history on the 2.0 grade point requirement goes back many, many, many years. Anecdotally, from my understanding, there was a lot of discussion about the grade point average at that time. I know that student government had recommended the 2.0 at that point in time when the board policy had originated. And it was based on the fact that oftentimes, students do come here straight from high school. Sometimes they don't have a good first semester or two, but they turn themselves around. And they wanted to be able to provide that kind of ability for students to go into leadership positions and have the ability to turn themselves around and be able to, then later on, if they're making 3.5, 3.6, but still, the first couple of semesters, maybe they didn't do so well, and it averages in to be able to have the opportunity. That was my understanding what the discussion was at the time that this was drafted, and it was also recommended by student services folks at both colleges at the time. But we certainly can take a look at that, because that's been many years since that discussion took place. At our Board Policy and Administrative Regulation Council, we do have student members on there. They're very active, so we definitely would confer with them.
So just to clarify, you're taking a 2.0 as their overall GPA from when they started. It doesn't take into account any type of improvement that they may have shown in the previous semester or so forth?
That is correct.
Okay. President Bernadette.
In answer to your question, as well as these board policies are looked at the college level as well, which we have ample student representation, and because this happens to deal with this issue, and the board's brought it up, we will make sure that the college and our student reps, which are ASG, our student government, are aware of this and give their recommendations.
Thank you. Student Trustee Correa has another. Sorry, I can go ahead and talk to ASG. I'll be meeting with ASIVC in particular over the break and see what they think, get their input. Thank you. Great. All right, with that, we already have a motion and a second. We'll go ahead and vote on the item. We have a yes, seven yes votes, one student advisory yes vote. Next, we have 6.6, which, my thing just froze. Okay. 6.6, Academic Personnel Actions. No changes?
Move approval.
Motion from Trustee Lang?
Second.
Second from Trustee Padberg. Seeing no requests to speak, we'll vote on the item. Seven yes votes, one student advisory yes vote. 6.7, Classified Personnel Actions.
So moved.
No changes. Motion from Trustee Jamal?
Second.
Second from Trustee Wright. Somebody's phone is on again.
Mine's off.
Go ahead and vote on the item. So we have seven yes votes and one student advisory yes. Now we're on to reports. 7.1, Irvine Valley College and Saddleback College Speakers. Anybody need any more information? Seeing none. 7.2, List of Board Requested Reports. 7.3, Basic Aid Report.
No change since last month.
Okay. 7.4, Facility Plan Status Report. Seeing none. 7.5, Monthly Financial Status Report. None. 7.6, Retiree OPEB Trust Fund.
And just to remind the board, there's a one-month lag during the months, November, December, with the catch-up in January.
Okay. So next, we'll move to reports from administration and governance groups, starting with Saddleback College Academic Senate.
Thank you, Dan Walsh, Academic Senate President, Saddleback College. I realize there's a fine line between the role of the Academic Senate and that of the Faculty Association. However, I must speak to the current state of contract negotiation as there's a potential effect on instruction. I encourage all parties to come to an agreement and avoid a negative impact on faculty morale and a negative image of the district and potential faculty recruitment. In addition, our current pay schedule is not as attractive as other districts, and our goal is to recruit the best faculty. Our pay schedule in an expensive region needs to reflect that. In the best interest of the academic quality of the district, I ask that the district negotiate in good faith and with expedience in contract negotiations. I look forward to seeing many of you during Professional Development Week in January, and happy holidays, or as I tell my students, happy solstice, the real reason for the seasons. Thank you.
All right. Next, we have Faculty Association.
Yes, hi. Claire Cesario, Faculty Association President. So this has been a very busy semester, and although they have all left by now, by this late hour, I want to thank all of the faculty who have been taking the time out of their busy schedules to attend these board meetings or to write their comments for others to read in order to let you know how passionate they are about the work that they do and about their efforts, often unremunerated, to ensure the success of our students. We have truly remarkable faculty in this district, both full-time and part-time, most of whom go far beyond, above and beyond what is required of them. Meeting with students, writing letters of recommendation, developing new curriculum and new programs, revising their syllabi, keeping current in their disciplines, and never being complacent, but always seeking to further develop their craft of teaching. I also want to thank our negotiating team, who have been working diligently since May, as well as the negotiating team for the district. We look forward to returning after the break with renewed efforts to reach agreements on various articles in the contract so that we can come to a timely completion of the faculty contract. Thank you.
All right, next, we have IVC Academic Senate.
Kathy Schmidler, IVC Academic Senate President. I echo the remarks of my colleagues and want to, again, say that we've had a very busy semester and thank all the board members for coming to a variety of events at IVC over the semester, and we hope we'll see you at least part of Flex Week as well. And of course, at the moment, we're all feeling, just we're grieving the loss of one of our colleagues. Marie was well-known to all of the faculty. She was very active. She was just a stupendous member of our faculty, and this is a great loss for us.
Okay. Associate Vice Chancellor Economic Development.
Good evening, thank you. Well, some incremental progress continues on many fronts for the development of our ATEP site. Here are some brief updates regarding our ATEP development planning. Progress continues with planning meetings for the ATEP Development Plan. HMC, our current contractor, has worked with our established committees to develop a building location framework, including future incremental options for the ATEP site. Also included are potential infrastructure requirements, parking, access, site utilities, and other details. The ATEP Development Plan will assist by providing a planning framework for the initial placement and infrastructure for college buildings, educational partners, and even commercial partners, while also supporting marketing for the site to education, to these education and commercial potential ground lease partners. The draft plan and report have been presented to colleges and to the district. have been presented to colleges and to the district committees and are now being proofed and reviewed for finalization, possibly with a board presentation in February. The next item is regarding the development of the Bell Avenue extension, the, actually, extension and the demolition. The demolition contractor has started ATEP site. You might see equipment already arriving. The demolition project includes the four buildings that were acquired as part of the land exchange from 2013. It also will include demolition along the right-of-way for the future Bell Avenue roadway, which will go across the ATEP property. The city and the district are cost-sharing the Bell Avenue right-of-way demolition and also the future design and construction for this road. This phase of demolition should be completed early in this spring, possibly February or March. And finally, planning for the IVC building at ATEP is pretty exciting. Progress continues for the planning of the building to be constructed at ATEP for IVC. The programming phase is complete where the instructional programs and all the supportive activities within the new buildings were identified and quantified as to the needed space. We are now well into the next phase with LPA, our criteria architect, working with the college and district staff to determine the building-specific criteria so that the district can start our procurement process for a design-build entity or firm. A request for pre-qualifications has been published on the district website for design-build entities interested in the ATEP IVC building. The full bid for the design and construction is planned to go out sometime around March 2015. So progress in planning continues in many tracks. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chancellor Technology and Learning Services.
No report this evening.
Vice Chancellor Human Resources.
No report. Have the best holiday season to all you.
Vice Chancellor Business Services.
Ditto with that.
IVC Classified Senate.
Good evening, servants and Cooper, President of IVC Classified Senate. First, I'd like to congratulate the IVC Women's Volleyball Team for their perfect season. That's pretty awesome. And on behalf of all the classified staff, I wish our condolences to Marie de la Palms family. She'll be surely missed. Thank you.
Thank you. CSCEA.
Scott Ferguson-Green, CSCEA President. Wanted to first congratulate Trustee Padberg, Trustee Milchker, and you, Mr. President, for being sworn in for another term. I thought it was really nice because I really do like formality and ceremony and it was nice to have the Jamals to be part of that and that was good to see. Also, too, I also wanted to congratulate the officers on the board. We're looking forward to working with all of you for 2015. Just a couple of notes. At Weed Elementary School, CSCEA presented holiday gifts to the children for those families that lost their homes during the Bull's Fire. So hopefully the kids will really be able to enjoy the holidays. Also, too, the Association President, Michael Bilbury, addressed Walmart workers in Long Beach recently as CSCE members all over the state, joined part of the nationwide support of employees of Walmart during Black Friday, this past Black Friday. Walmart takes in $16 billion a year and the Walton family, their wealth is worth combined 43% of Americans in this country. And yet, for a major company, they have one of the lowest wages for workers in the country. And a lot of times that there is the appearance of presentation and that presentation could be spin. That presentation could be something in which, as I've experienced, you can have a grand presentation and it could be real or it could be something that could be pretend. But if you look real hard, the presentation isn't all that it seems and there needs to be fact-finding. And so when you get fact-finding, then sometimes you get the truth. And yet those conditions are still bad for Walmart. Since last year's Black Friday protests, the company committed to raise wages for its lowest-paid workers. They rolled out a new scheduling system that allows workers to sign up for open shifts and improved protections for pregnant workers. We also wanted to make sure that on behalf of the CSCEA classified staff, that we wanted to wish everyone happy winter holidays, spending it with time, spending time with friends and family. And then as I understand, there are some new additions to the respective families on the board and I know that will make the holidays even special. So I look forward to seeing all of you in 2015. Thank you.
Thank you. Saddleback College, Classified Senate.
Good evening, Mike Soder, Classified Senate for Saddleback College. And on behalf of Classified Senate at Saddleback, I'd like to wish everyone happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and Happy New Year. Thanks.
Thank you. So tonight we adjourn our meeting in memory of two professors and a student. As was mentioned before, Kay Stevens, a dedicated professor and department chair of the Medical Assistant Program in Insurance and Coding at Saddleback College. Very sad to learn that Kay unexpectedly passed away last Tuesday. Memorial service will be held at 1:00 PM on December 19th at Laguna Country United Methodist Church. Second, Marie de la Palms, an inspirational professor and co-chair of the Dance Department at Irvine Valley College. It was with great sadness to learn of Marie's passing yesterday. A funeral mass will be held at 10:00 AM Wednesday, December 17, 2014, at our Lady Queen of Angels Catholic Church. Lastly, Quaney Kwabi, a student from Irvine Valley College who was tragically killed in an auto accident on Sunday. Our thoughts and prayers go out to the families, friends, and colleagues of these wonderful individuals. Thank you and have a good night.